Seven o'clock, regular council meeting and successor agency meeting to order. Can we make sure our cell phones and stuff are shut off? Can we kind of help the process if you are going to want to speak on something? We request that you fill out a speaker form to kind of help us manage the time and also it allows us to follow back up with you later on. Most of this we cannot respond to if it's general public comment, but allows us the ability to have an extended discussion later on and has been working out quite well.
Mayor, please be sure to mention that it is not required that they put that in.
I just said request, yes ma'am. And then we'll do a call to order and if we could get the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Do you want to do pledge first or...
Oh yeah, we could do that first. Let me look around here. Do we have the new captain here? Can we get the police chief up front, sir, front and center? Did you lead us in the pledge? And I'd like us to remember that this is autism month. Let's think about those kids that kind of need a little help and it's also sexual awareness month, so when you do your moment of silence, you can use it for the troops, you can use it for our fallen heroes, or think about those other topics. Searchers.
Please face the flag, right hand over the heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Excellent. So I think we're starting off. Debbie and Christina, are you both here? Great.
Do we do roll call?
Oh, that's why I want to do roll call. Roll call.
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Protim Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Bettencourt.
Here.
Councilmember Corio.
Here.
Councilmember Loa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I have Deborah Rukowski Heinz up on top of the list there. Chris, are you all set?
Yes.
So Christina was our new housing authority commissioner. We just appointed and we're going to officially swear her in. So can you raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ussie Nardoy Lane.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And a charter of the city of Palmdale.
And a charter of the city of Palmdale.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And then I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
There you go. You good?
Yes. We have the baby and do you know how that is?
I get it, I get that. Okay. Debbie is our, is our new library trustee. Oh geez, that just comes out. Thanks for the warning. Debbie's our new library trustee and we'll go ahead and, go ahead and start. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Deborah Rukowski Heinz.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And a charter of the city of Palmdale.
And the charter of the city of Palmdale.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true, true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What's our next one there?
So the next item is presentation to animal care center.
Oh, okay. Jesse, you got a little one this time. So I want to tell you guys, okay, we got to get the awe factor going here again tonight, okay? Because last week, y'all remember Bella, right? And she was kind of shy and I reached down, I knelt down, I started scratching her and then she got her hair all over me and leaned up there and stuck her tongue out and was smiling, while the next day they get a call to get her transferred because somebody wanted her. So it works. Ladies and gentlemen, adopt these dogs. That shelter is pretty full. So want to tell us what we got tonight?
Sir. How are you?
Good. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, sir. Tonight I have Ruby. Ruby is a little terrier Chihuahua mix and she's only eight months old. But she's still a baby and a cuddle baby at that. Look at her. Yeah, she came to us as a stray. I don't know how she came to us as a stray, if it was brought in or if it was picked up by one of our officers. Other than that, she is altered. She's got all her shots and she's got her chipping planted. So she is ready to go tomorrow because the shelter is closed right now. So if you want her, come and get her. She's available, ready to mingle, ready to cuddle with you as long as you want it to. She's really sweet. She is, she gets a little playful, but she just wants to cuddle.
That's about it?
About it, sir.
Yeah. So I want to again thank our partners over at Animal Care and Control and all the volunteers. You know Jesse works really hard, one of the volunteers over there and it's because they, they love all these little critters and they want them all to get a forever home. So we're, we're not calling them strays anymore, we're calling them homeless dogs, okay? So we got, so anyways, I think Ruby hits the awe factor pretty good here, huh? What do you think? You good? Oh, there we go. All right. Thank you Jesse. And if any of you want to volunteer, Jesse will take your name and everything like that, okay?
Neighborhood services department, anybody that adopts our future council critter gets a free goodie bag from the neighborhood.
Neighborhood services hasn't got goodies if you adopt two to try to help the process, so, okay? Thanks Jesse. Thanks, thanks again. Thank you.
The next item is the aerospace valley robotics, so you'll be calling up Dani to win.
Our aerospace valley robotics. Don't eat that. We understand we have some robotics to discuss briefly here tonight?
Yes. I also have a video, a short video that I'd like to show everybody and hopefully it excites you into attending our robotics competition, which is this weekend. We work with First Robotics, which is a worldwide organization and they came out from New Hampshire, took a look at the Antelope Valley to see whether they thought this would be a good place for robotics competition. And they did and they, they picked Eastside High School. It is one of the larger gyms in the, in the Antelope Valley and it has a small gym right next to it, which is where the pits are. I'm going to show you a video real fast. This is Eastside High School transformed. It has, it has audio too.
First is only about engineering. It's not just about robots. There are so many different things that are involved with being in a robotics team. You can learn programming and you can be designing things. You're collaborating constantly with all your team members. You're building things for that hands-on experience and you're working with industry partners, with industry nectaries. They're giving you skills that they learned at their workplace and that they learned in college.
That's TPAs.
It's a theme of national worldwide collaboration and we're trying to teach the students leadership, how to solve problems and that's what it's all about. That's our objective. The theme of this year's game is Power Up. It's an arcade game where teams are trying to escape from the field by getting the balancing of the scales and the switches to their team, score points and beat the boss.
That's a former Antelope Valley high school student who now works for Disney.
And the aerospace valley regional is underway. The name of the game is First Power Up.
They're treating critters too and duct tape. They have to rethink about duct tape.
I'll take.
The motto of First is cooperation. It's a competition in a group. In an alliance, we have three robots that compete together for the title of champion. These robots work together against the other three teams and then leave each their respective jobs, either doing switch, scale or exchange, or even going to the opponent's side and messing with their robots.
It's a fun challenge being able to communicate with other teams and see what their robot can do to come up with the best game strategy possible.
The orange vests are Lancaster High School team. Those students are from Turkey. Came all the way over to participate in the competition.
I got to tell you, I'm really impressed with the leadership capabilities I'm seeing in today's high school students. So I am very confident in the future and just want to congratulate you on being here. Keep going, keep focused on STEM and keep supporting with each other.
That just gives you a taste of what it's like. It's so exciting to me anyway. These students are, they get their instructions in January. They have six weeks to build the robot and then they ship them, they create them up and ship them off to regional competitions. They have to win at some level at a regional competition to compete internationally. And we do have teams, like I mentioned, we have a team from Turkey. The 20 students are already here in the Antelope Valley. They came early because they wanted to see America. I thought that was so cool and they're so excited. They, they're kind of running all over the place. So if you see some giddy kids in, in a blue, you know, t-shirt and jeans, that's the kids from Turkey. We also have kids coming from Switzerland and we have a team coming from Zimbabwe this year. So this is kind of exciting. It is a big deal. It really is and I hope that you'll come, I hope the council members will come too. I'm sorry, speaking with my back to you, but I hope you'll be able to stop by and take a look and...
So, and can you tell us again when and where?
Well, it's actually, we're preparing for it right now. We're converting the entire gym complex. We have a little cafe that we set up for all the volunteers that come out and we're converting the big gym to small gym. Well, there's a team of people that are doing it. I'm not doing it. Neither is Mary Ann. We got to come here instead, but it's this weekend, Friday and Saturday. So can't make it on Friday at Eastside, Eastside High School.
All right. So there you go, Eastside High. And you see why you have organizations' labels on there and sponsorships by people like NASA? Because you know what that is? That's recruiting. They're looking to recruit these kids and that's what, that's what it's all about. Get these kids, give them something else to do and then bring them back home so they can build all the stuff that they're doing out there at the plant and everything.
We had, at last year's competition, we had 14 Antelope Valley high school districts and, and TBA students who have gone on to college, become engineers, came back to help with last year's competition. There's a picture. I know they're coming home and they're, and they're bringing their skills with them.
So there you go. So this Saturday, keep an eye out and, and what's the website if you want to find it?
avregional.org.
Avregional.org. There you go. Thank you Dani, thanks for being here. So next item here is going to be our ambassadors.
Our ambassadors.
So Trish, you want to tell us about that?
Yes. Well, it's a perfect month to be introducing this new volunteer program. It is internationally Volunteer Appreciation Month. So I do want to tell you, if there's you or someone in your life is volunteering somewhere, please give them a shout out, give them a pat on the back. They're making a difference somewhere and it's important. This new program is exciting to us. We, we struggle all the time with telling our story and getting the information about what an amazing community this is. And it occurred to us, who's the best person to tell that story? You are, the community. So each year, now in our 13th year, our Palmdale Partners Academy brings in a group and they graduate after eight weeks of pretty intensive classes going through the whole city. And every year we graduate what I think is even a more enthusiastic, more excited, more ready to get out there group of people to tell the story of Palmdale and to share their enthusiasm. So we reached out to them and we are creating and introducing to you this evening the Palmdale Partners Community Ambassador Program. And you'll be seeing these five ladies who are our initial group. They'll be here at council meetings each month, so if you have questions or you come in and you're not sure where you're going to talk or when your item's up, they'll be there to help you. They'll be at community events, they'll be at service days, they'll be everywhere. They don't know it yet. And if you are interested in joining them at some point, we'll be recruiting this summer and the only requirement is that you attend the Palmdale Partners Academy, which will be held again this fall. So without further ado, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Ronita Cole. Marie, Maria James. Lauren Lee. Patricia Lanidio. And Diana Love. And I guess you could say they're our founding partners.
You guys want to get in the picture? I, I want to thank, I want to thank you for stepping out and being the, being the first ones to, to kind of show us how we need to do this program with everybody else in the future. And this is just another layer of people out there to help people. So get a good look at them, you're going to be seeing them out there when we do different community functions and stuff. And you know, it's the old deal like, you know, my name is so-and-so, I'm here to help, right? So there you go. Thank you very much. Let's give them a hand. All right, so the sheriffs were panicking when they saw the black and white striped hats in here. Thought there was a break or something they needed to be aware of. But you know, a couple of weeks ago, I was invited to come out to Marie Kerr Park and we had vintage baseball, as you can see. They didn't get this out of grandpa's closet. It's a new league and I'm going to let the, the team captain here, Skip, go ahead and tell you real quick about this.
Well, I wasn't prepared for that, but okay. So the Southern California Vintage Baseball League is a new league starting just this year. There's five teams in the league, Palmdale, Crestline, Riverside, Redondo Beach and Long Beach. Come on up gentlemen. And so we play with the rules, the equipment and the etiquette of the year 1886. So we play baseball the way it was in its infancy. The bat, hey, hey cheeks, cheeks. This is also Ruby, so the second Ruby of the night. Our bats are made differently. They're much, much heavier than a, than a typical modern day bat. They're usually over 40 ounces. The balls are made differently and we try to catch the balls with this.
Or your fingernails.
Or your fingernail. So there's no padding, there's no web. So the rules are a lot different. I'm not going to get into all that now for time reasons, but if you're interested in coming out and seeing our next match, I actually have some flyers here. It's April 27th against the Riverside Smudge Pots.
So they, they played the, the Palmdale Blue Stockings and they played the Long Beach Oilers and it was an exciting game and we had...
They lost big, but we got a lot of fun.
Yeah, but you know what? See, had a lot of fun. And what's cool is they get out there and, and a lot of the family shows up in their vintage clothing wear and they're, and they're, they're playing all the old time baseball music and everything. And it was, people were coming over, they were hearing it, coming over looking to see what was going on and it was a blast. Let me tell you, it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. So the date again?
April 27th at noon at Marie Kerr Park.
Noon, Marie Kerr Park. So let's, come on over here, Skip, and then, so what's your, what's your game name?
Cheeks. Gimme. Pack.
Wait a second. Gimme what?
Gimme more. Pack.
Jeeves.
Flip. They call me Coach. I've been Coach, you know, we're at Marie Kerr, City of Palmdale, Parks and Rec for 16 years.
A little, a little testimonial there you get, so. But anyways, these guys have got all kind of old time names and stuff and the umpire gets out there and he's, he wears a suit with a big top hat, so it's pretty, pretty cool. So let's, get a picture. So let's give these guys a hand there.
No smiling for this picture. They didn't do that each of these.
Jennifer from Parks and Recs here to tell us about Walk On Words.
And specifically National Poetry Month is also April and it is my pleasure to introduce two of our local poets. First we have Mary Denning. Want to join us up here? And she's with her son, who is also a poet. This is Louis Denning. Come on up. Just a little bit about Mary and Louis. They, like Mayor Hoffbauer mentioned, they are both winners of our Walk On Words competition. Mary is actually our very first winner of the competition. That was back in 2013 and her first poem, you can actually find out at Poncelon Square. So it's stamped out there, you'll have to check it out if you haven't seen it. She also won the contest again in 2016 and that poem is stamped at Joe Davies Heritage Air Park. And along with that, see talent runs in the family, Louis has a stamp also at Joe Davies Heritage Air Park. He won the contest in 2016 as well. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Mary. She's going to say a couple of words about just how important poetry is in our community and society.
Okay, thank you. Well, I wrote this down because I don't remember very well, but I wrote that poetry to me is an individual's appreciation of what they see and feel. As a young child, I enjoyed the poetry of Eugene Field. He was a children's poet. He wrote poems like, he wrote, yeah, "The little boy dog was covered in dust, but sturdy and staunch, she stood." And then I wrote many more poems and I liked them all. And at a young age, I loved the writings of James Whitcomb Riley. And one of my favorite poems then as a child was "Little Orphan Annie." She came to our house to stay. She washed all the cups and brushed the trumps away. And I thought, oh my goodness, that poor little girl, she had to do all the work. So when I was about seven, I was really taken with poets. But now today I see the beauty, beauty in our desert and I write about things about the desert and I write about what beauty holds us captive here and how I see all the beauty in our desert with the beautiful sunsets and sunrises and the Joshua trees and the golden poppies. And so poetry lets one share to me, share a poet's heart, how they see the world in a rhythmic, flowing lyrical river of words. I see the value of poetry in that unveiling of the ordinary into the extraordinary. And that's the way I look at poetry. I didn't start writing until I was 81. I took it up as a, I needed a hobby in my old age. So now at 87, going on to 88, I'm still writing.
Well, so I'm not really a poet. My mom wrote poetry because she, her hands got a little shaky, she couldn't paint anymore, so she took up poetry. I saw that she won the first competition. I thought, well, if mom could do it, I can get my words set in stone. So I'm a history teacher and I like the idea of getting my words set in stone. So I tried it and I won and I got to realize there must be nobody else trying out for this. So I, I told my students, so I teach at Hillview Middle School and sure enough, last year, Donna Schorr won and her poem is right outside here on the history of Palmdale. It's called Palmdale, My Palmetall. So I'm telling my students again this year and I think so few people go and try and do this, so please spread the word about the Walk On Words to everybody you know, because I think somewhere out there is a poet that needs to be discovered and revealed and the value of poetry in a political way, you know, if we're living in a democracy, it makes us work on how we use our words. A poet is a wordsmith and the better we can communicate, the better our country will function. And economically, you know, it's motivational, it inspires people to do great things like we do here in Antelope Valley. Thanks.
And I want to say that I belong to the Antelope Valley Writers Association and anyone is welcome that wants to come and write. Yes, we meet at the, it's on Fern Street, Jackson and Fern, well, at the senior center.
Oh, the senior center, okay.
So we meet every Wednesday at 11 o'clock in the morning.
There you go. Now, so we also, we have, we have the perfunctory proclamation of National Poetry Month and in the interest of time, I'm going to say, if you want to see it, it will be over at Parks and Rec Building, correct? And how many of you have seen some of the poetry that's, that's in our sidewalks? Not the stuff that maintenance has got to clean up, but the stuff that was put there deliberately by, by, by these poets. How many of you have seen them? So I'm seeing a few hands. Look for it. It's Poncelon Square, we got it, Joe Davies, we got it, Marie Kerr, we got it at a lot of places out there, so it's all good stuff. So, yeah, there we go.
Thank you very much.
Good. All right, Ann is in the wings. In the on-deck circle, so to speak. So, who we got tonight?
Well, I'm gonna change the topic up a little bit. And we're gonna talk to you for just a moment about a topic that no one really wants to talk about. What is it that we can do, or what happens to us after we die? And I have the pleasure of introducing somebody to you tonight that can tell you how you can make a decision tonight that you can be a hero to others with your consideration of being an organ donor. And so, I'd like to introduce Jessica Hooper, or I'm sorry, Jessica Horton, with an organization called One Legacy, to talk to you about organ...
Thanks.
Okay. Little nervous. Haven't told my story in a year. Here we go.
Have no clothes on, and it's all be fine.
Oh, no. April is Organ Eye and Tissue Donation Awareness Month. Both Palmdale Hospital and Lancaster Hospital fly the flag this month. And it's all about bringing awareness to the pink dot on your driver's license and how important that pink dot is. And on a personal note, I was born with congenital glaucoma, lost vision in my left eye eleven months. The doctors told my parents I'd be blind by the time I was fifteen. I held on to my vision until I was about twenty-six. My vision started failing me in the form of, as if you were trying to look through a bottle of water. Early in the morning, that's what my vision was like. And I was so afraid to tell anybody because I thought I was losing my vision forever. And two years went by, and I drove to work every morning. Got to work, and for about three to four hours every morning, I had that type of vision. Finally, I told my doctor, and he said, well, you can have a cornea transplant. And I said, oh, okay. So, we did a transplant. I got back to work, back to driving, back to a normal life, had children. Eighteen and a half years go by, and last year, I started having different vision problems. As of January sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, I am a two-time cornea recipient. I am back at work as of February, back to driving. And life is good. And I just wanna make people aware of how important it is to have that pink dot on your driver's license. If you have that pink dot, when that time comes, your family doesn't have to make that decision. You've already made that decision for them by telling them that that was your wishes. One tissue donor can help over a hundred people. One organ donor can help eight people. So, it's very important.
So, it's just, it's one of those sobering things that, you know, nobody wants to talk about, nobody wants to think about. But it's amazing, the changes you can make in other people's lives. And basically, it's your legacy living on them. So, that's just something to think about, you know? So, you've seen that, I'm sure you all seen that video of the guy that ran cross-country to meet up with the guy and listen to his daughter's heart. I mean, that just choked me up to watch that. So, Ann, what do we got here?
We have a proclamation for the DMV and the Donate Life California Month, proclaiming this and encouraging everyone to consider being an organ and tissue donor.
Let's go over here. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Thanks for filling us in. Okay, so, that's it for the presentation. Get down to business. Those of you that want to make an exit, this is a good path.
We have to claim this under Form 700, do we? There's not enough in there, is there? All right, thanks, everyone, for bearing with us tonight. We got a merit badge tonight? You had to go to Citizens of the Community, right? Yes, sir. Good job, thanks for being here. Great. See you, camperee. All right, we'll get back on the agenda here. Find the right page. All right, so, item number six, I need a waiver of full reading resolutions and ordinances, please.
Moved away the full reading and the resolution and the ordinances to be considered and voted out at this meeting.
Second?
All right, so, who pushed the button there?
I did.
Loa and Correa, you guys gotta be quicker than that, you guys. And the item carries five zero. Item number seven. Public comments on items number eight point one through eight point two. This is the consent calendar?
Eight point twenty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight point twenty-nine. So, if you look into your agenda, and you wanted to comment on something on that, if you wish to comment on that item, listen on the consent calendar on this agenda, please come forward to the podium, state the item number and your comments. Please be advised, you have a three-minute limit. You're not obligated to use the whole three minutes. And... Do we have any speakers, first of all, Madam Clerk? None? Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on a consent calendar item? This is items number eight point one through eight point two-nine. Going once, going twice. Wonderful, there we go. Okay, counsel, any items that you wish to pull? Discussion or questions, please?
I'm gonna pull eight point six.
Eight point six?
I'd like to make a couple of comments on eight point three.
Okay, eight point three?
Eight point eleven.
Eight point one, anything else? Coincidentally, the ones that I was looking for. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as comprised, with the exception of eight point three, eight point six, and eight point eleven.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Loa.
I made the second.
And whoever jumped on the button, there you go. Loa and Bishop. Was the button pushed?
There it is.
Show your votes, please. The item carries five to zero. And item eight point three, you said you answered the question, sir?
Yes, well, no questions. Just wanted to make sure that we follow up on this contract. There is a significant increase from the amount from previous years. And I am just confident that this is going to improve the way our parks are gonna be kept up. After briefing discussions with staff, it was assuring to see that there is some mechanisms in the contract to make sure that the contractor provides the quality of our service that we expect. Driving around looking at our parks, yeah, they need to be paid more attention to as far as keeping and maintaining, cleaning. Make us feel proud of where we live. Our residents need to deserve, they deserve a clean place, to even play. And I think that the mechanisms in place will ensure that the parks get proper maintenance.
I was, I was looking at the differences here as well. And I've got to, I've gotta say that staff had their work cut out for them on this item. And there were a lot of issues that needed to be addressed relative to how do we step up our game with our public facility maintenance relative to the parks and transit center and places of that nature. And this was a very comprehensive proposal by that applicant. Anybody else have a comment or anything you want to add to this? Or do we need, think we need any staff?
There was a concern about the discrepancy between these three bids that were made. And I thought, you know, we had briefings today, rather significant and-depth briefings, explaining the reason why there was such a difference between these proposals. And I've been given additional information this afternoon. I feel comfortable with supporting this at this point. But I believe that in the future, staff should provide us with not just the proposal that is being, that's being suggested by staff, but also the ones that weren't, so that we could also take a look at them ourselves independently. But I think we can move on with it.
Anything else?
I think that's, I think that's good.
All right, so, on eight point three, I need a, I'll need a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Correa has a motion to approve. Somebody has a second on that?
Second.
I have Ms. Benton Court with a second. And show your votes. Item carries five zero, thank you. Item eight point six.
All right, I'm gonna recuse myself from this one in an abundance of caution for having done business with the City of Lancaster.
In that event...
This is, no, this is ABTA. Okay, well...
In that event...
You know what? Hold on. All right, well, go ahead. Because I'm gonna ask Macy to give us a quick, a quick update on this, so.
Okay, this item is for the GPE.
Right. Macy, can you give us the Reader's Digest version of what we're looking at here?
The issue was the selection of ABTA board members and alternates. The language was developed to make the alternates a little more flexible as far as who chose them from what cities. We tasked the Transit Advisory Committee, which is comprised of two members from each jurisdiction, to work through that language. And they came back to us with a language that we feel is correct and gives the three jurisdictions what they wanted. So, I'm very comfortable with that.
All right, I know this took a while to get through all of the hurdles and the hoops and the things, but... Thank, why don't you stay in the front row? Because I'm gonna call you right back up, okay?
Front row.
All right, so, anybody else have any questions or anything on this item?
Move to approve.
Okay, I have Mr. Loa?
Second.
Okay, so, excuse me, Mayor, is this item ten point one?
This is eight point six. Eight point six.
Thank you.
So, I have Mr. Loa and Mr. Correa. You have to be quicker.
You have one abstention.
Four zero with one abstention. You want to tell them, take the musical headphones off and bring them back in? So, on eight point one-one?
Yeah, I asked you to take a look at that. I think the proposal is, is fine. I think it's very important that we have the annual fireworks show. But I believe staff is now looking at perhaps finding a venue for putting fireworks aside from the Marie Kerr Park, placing one on the east side of town, where traditionally, for many years, it was held at Palmdale High School. And I know there's issues with that. But I do think it's important that we have a balance of this important celebration in the community, that we find a place that's accessible to the east side of the city. But I'm ready to approve it. I just wanted to part that out.
One of the other things we talked about was maybe looking at having a... Some of these things tend to be venue-specific.
Yes.
And we recognize that.
Yes.
So, we're looking for maybe to see if there's something else. Some of the discussion that I've heard kicked around by other people in the community have been maybe a free swim day, open a water park up.
But not fireworks related, just another...
Maybe do a car show. Let's look at some options, so we can do something else so that the entire city feels like they're participating in something, so. But this is a three-year contract as well, too.
Yeah, we thought maybe we could have something during the daytime, and then at those events, also promote them coming to the fireworks in the evening.
Yeah.
So that each party can get to celebrate.
Make sure there's a bus to get over there. As long as you're here. Okay, so, this is gonna be great. How many of you saw the fireworks show last year? Okay, now, how long that thing go on? You thought it was over, and it wasn't over, so. But, okay, so I need a motion to approve on eight point one. Okay, Ms. Benton Court?
Second.
Mr. Loa? Motion, a second to approve? And? Show your vote.
So, the motion passed, yes.
There you go, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Carrie. You got off easy on that one. With the council's indulgence, we've got the ABTA director here. He's got a report coming up, but we have a lot of people here. And before they all get burned out and don't hear it, as long as he's here, I'd like to ask, with your indulgence, if we can bring ten point one and bring him up and let him go ahead and do this, give us a report on some of the programs and things that are going on to benefit the residents in our community that's going on with the transit authority, please.
Yeah, sure. Mayor Hoffbauer?
Sir?
Just think, we're over the City Council. Hopefully, they've got my PowerPoint ready to queue up. We've got a lot of things going on. I've been at the helm of the ABTA for about ten months. And we've turned our attention from our electric fleet, which is in very nice transition, to getting back to the basics of getting people from where they are to where they need to be safely, cost-effectively, and on time. That is really the only single function of transit. That's our goal and our purpose of life. And so, we've got a lot of neat things going on. We're actively working with our jurisdictional partners to provide, improve transit hubs adjacent to MetroLink stations. ABT has made dramatic capital improvements in its bus charging infrastructure, Palmdale Regional Transportation Center. And I'll discuss that in a minute. And we're working with the City of Lancaster to develop a new transit hub charging station to North MetroLink Station. These improvements will provide for increased interconnectivity with the MetroLink stations and efficient transfers to bus rods. Capital improvements, significant progress toward the electrification of our fleet is underway. Of our seventy-five bus current fleet, we're gonna end up with eighty electric buses, so a five-bus expansion. Thirteen of those new buses are sixty-foot articulated buses that will serve a much more efficient Route One. That route currently is our heaviest ridership, but is structured from about ten years ago. And we're gonna improve it over the next couple of months to where we'll be running it in fifteen-minute headways instead of the current twenty- and thirty-minute headways. So, there will be more frequent buses for our passengers, more opportunities to ride the bus across town. The sixty-foot bus is also accommodating thirty extra passengers per bus. So, by increasing frequency and having a bus that holds thirty extra people, we hope to make the transit experience much more enjoyable and beneficial for our riders. And our charging infrastructure, the two stations are complete now. Sarge and Stevo is in Royal Park. We have three two-hundred-and-fifty-kilowatt charging pads done, working, and enabling us to add approximately one mile of range for every minute we sit on the pad. So, during the day, if we get eighty minutes on the pad, we increase the capacity of the sixty-foot bus by eighty miles, which effectively allows it to stay out all day, not have to come back for any charging or switch outs. We've done the same thing at the Palmdale Transit Center. That station is, also has three two-hundred-and-fifty-amp chargers, the two-hundred-and-two-fifty-kilowatt chargers, and they're up and running. So, our next effort is to get all the buses equipped with the charging plates. And so, that effort has started. We have about seven of the sixty-footers done, and the first two forty-footers are underway. The new zero, oh, just wanted to show you a picture of that bus real quick. That's our articulated sixty-foot bus. We're the first in the country to be running an all-electric articulated bus, so. We've got a lot of firsts on our belt. First fleet to declare our intent to go all-electric, issued a purchase order to back up our intent. First fleet to take delivery of sixty-foot articulated electric buses and running them. Our oldest one, I just noticed today, has got sixty-two thousand miles in just about a year of very effective service. Service improvements. We started service at Edwards Air Force Base. We're working hard to get ridership up on that. We average about seventeen riders... hard to get ridership up on that. We average about seventeen riders a day. We'd like to see about fifty, but you gotta start somewhere above zero and work your way up from there. We're conducting another survey on the base along with putting together a focus group. What is starting to emerge is a requirement that people would be more apt and willing to take the bus to work on Edwards. You gotta remember, it's quite a wa, a large area. If there was a, a way to get around a circulator system on the base, so that when you, it's lunchtime, you're not having to depend on a friend to take you to lunch or a friend to take you to one of the other contractors. So we're looking at that. We're planning to start Mojave on June first as the current plan. We're talking to the City of Santa Clarita to, to, to work more closely with them in terms of interconnecting our buses with their buses and maybe finding more efficient ways to get our, our riders down to LA Basin with some help from Santa Clarita. We did start the VA Medical Center runs in downtown LA on Route seven eighty-six. We'd love to see heavy ridership on that, but if even one veteran a month takes that bus down there, it's worth the effort. We're gonna continue to serve our veterans and men and women who've served this country so loyally and diligently. So that, that will continue, and we're looking for more opportunities. We created a stop on O eight in the Sierra Highway to provide closer access to County Los Angeles Department of Children and Family Services office, as well as a family counseling center and some private businesses. Again, it's very important to us to give this opportunity. Typically, families that need to visit those offices are, are those that also require some assistance from transit. So having a bus right there in the parking lot, the stop is, I think, very important, and we thank Mayor Hoffbauer for being at our grand opening. We've been cutting on that day and actually rode the bus to the stop, so.
Not the only time I ride your bus.
No, yeah, I was gonna say, one of our strongest advocates. We're proud to have you on our board. We started service between the Anlo Valley College and Lancaster campus and the Palmdale Center. It's called Route Eight. It services facility, services students, faculty, and the general public. It's an expedited route. We get across town in about thirty minutes with one, only one stop at Palmdale Transit Center, and that's been a very successful, well-received route. Ridership information compiled and analyzed for future improvements is underway. We've got a regional transit plan, as you know, that's being, that's being studied, and some very reviewing things are starting to emerge in that study, and I'm confident when that's over and we implement the recommendations that, again, we'll have a much more robust, user-friendly route system, and hopefully continue to be a, a part of the fabric of the lives of our citizens in Palmdale, Lancaster, and LA, LA County.
So on that, on that campus, that Campus Express Bus Center, so if you all recall, when it came up, that was, some of the students came in here, and they were speaking to us about the problems they were having, and it was taking them two hours to get between the, the two facilities, and I didn't think that was right. And I took my buck and a half and I went and I got on a bus, and I missed my connection, and it took me three hours. And, and so we went back and we talked about that, that that was unacceptable. How can we, how can we expect these students to be trying to take classes between these facilities but not be able to get there? And it's an all-day trip. And what do we got it down to for that trip now, from two to three hours down to what?
About thirty-five minutes.
About thirty-five minutes, okay, so. I just, I just had to roar horn it.
We appreciate that. And, and input from our, from our stakeholders and, and the public is very important to us, learning to do our job better and better. So we thank you for that input. Just wanted to show you our, our, our little bus on the way to Edwards Air Force Base. We're really proud of that. It took a while to get that service started, but we had tremendous amount of cooperation from the base. We had to get over thirty of our drivers through security clearance procedure at Edwards Air Force Base, which is no easy task. We got that, they even gave me one. Lapse, lapse of judgment for just a couple of seconds, but, but again, we're very proud of that route, and we're gonna work hard to get the ridership up on that, get it to where, where it needs to be.
I know there was a lot of interest. There were hundreds interested.
Yeah.
Once we fix that internal circulation, I think we're gonna see that all those, those interests convert over.
Convert over, yeah. In fact, we, we started a new survey out there, to your point, and of the first three hundred respondents, we've gotten forty-nine percent have said, yes, if there's a circulator, I'd be inclined to take the bus. That's a strong response, so. We're not done with all the survey responses yet, but that's the initial pass through. So service reliability, we're, we're aggressively monitoring local service performance. We, we now meet every single morning, every day of the week in my office at eight o'clock, when our contractor will review the results from the day before. We, we analyze breakdowns, complaints, late buses, delays, and analyze everything, every single thing that went right and wrong each day and make immediate adjustments. We don't wait for a month or a week or two weeks to go by to look at history, and because at that point, it's a post-mortem. It's not, you're not trying to save a patient anymore. You're just doing an autopsy. So we're, we're on it every day. Improved coordination communication, which leads to improved coordination and communication with our contractors and operators. We've worked, we're working on and have improved on-time performance to eight, to over eighty percent. I really wanna be in the nineties, but we're up from the seventies into the eighties and continue to press forward. We're addressing concerns regarding appropriate driver operating layer over times. It's again part of our total route study and, and it's, and infrastructure assessment. We're, we're addressing the changing needs associated with electric bus fleet. Again, it's, it's a retraining of technicians and orientation of how you diagnose and what you look for, and believe it or not, as we learn and get better, it's a faster and smoother thing to do than try and diagnose an old diesel engine with a, with an automatic transmission. And we want to provide improved inter-service connective, connectivity. Technology-wise, we worked real hard from when I started on, on June first, and in December, we, we unveiled our new customer-focused website. It allows better readability and functionality on smartphones. This, the site was designed around a smartphone instead of around a computer, and then has to adapt to a smartphone, because most of our riders are at a bus stop trying to figure out when the next bus is coming. And if they're trying to look at a website that was designed for a computer nineteen or twenty inch screen, it's very hard. So this is built on a, on a platform to support smartphones, provides better access to the ABTA trip route. The first thing you see when, when the menu opens up is where do you wanna go? And you drop in where you wanna go, and it'll tell you how to get there most effectively. It also provides greater access to rider alerts, more transit options, and better connected to information for route stops, schedules, and fares. Community outreach efforts were really dedicated to, to excellent customer service. I've implemented a new complaint handling system where we have, our people have to get back to a customer who complains within twenty-four hours and, and make contact with that person, resolve the issue, and do whatever it takes to make things right for that person. We don't, it's not ten days or two weeks, it's twenty-four hours. And that's worst case, we try to get back the same day. We are in the middle of our, of a massive, two different plans, actually. A massive regional transit plan that's looking at the entire Anlo Valley from east end to west end, north and south, to figure out if we, our route structures, which are really old, how they need to be changed, restructured, and improved to provide better interconnectivity, faster connection times, and get people where they wanna go quickly and safely and cost effectively. Same time, we're conducting a micro-transit study predominantly on the east end of the Lake Los Angeles, Sun Village kind of areas, to see how we can better serve them with a more of a demand-response type service, like an Uber rather than a forty-foot bus taking an hour and a half to run out to Hundred Seventieth, pick up two people, run all the way back into Palmdale. And the study, the micro-transit phase one is done. It looks very promising, so we're in the, in April, we'll be analyzing what kind of vehicles we'll need, what kind of software and hardware we'll need to be on those vehicles to make this work. And hopefully at some point, I'll, I'll encompass our entire dial ride system as well. So that's, those things are going on. We've, we, we have formed a community advisory group to provide feedback and guidance as a steering committee to these, to the regional transit effort. We're doing a lot of travel training to help people understand how to ride the bus effectively and efficiently and not, not fear the unknown, help them read the schedules, understand how the stops work. We do reduce stage requirement to, down to sixty-two years old for senior angle pass.
By turn sixty-five, he changes it to sixty-two.
Well, I just wanted to make it easier for you. And we implemented free transfers on our local transit routes as long as you're using a tap card. So it used to be you had to pay a dollar fifty every time you got on a bus, even if it was just transferring over, but now it's, if you, if you tap once, you can, your next four hours with the rides are free, free transfers. Please buy a tap card. Please use our transit service. Shameless. And we are really, are pushing us very hard to be involved with our community. We're involved with the YMCA, the Senior Expo, the Veterans Stand, Stand Down. We, we go to the Veterans' coffee breakfast meetings. We're just reaching out and trying to get deeper and deeper into our community, understand how we can be more functional and more important to the community. Future capital improvements, we're gonna be working with the Anlo Valley Mall to provide a more convenient bus stop adjacent to one of the main entrances. It's set out across Tenth Street and walk through a hundred yards of parking lot and either beating down sun or pouring down rain. Looks like we've had both this year. So as they, as they overhaul the, the mall, we're gonna make sure that our transit service is there, convenient, get you into the stores, get you out of the stores without having to get soaked or burned. In the few, in the more distant future, we're, we're envisioning a, a elevated monorail system that would get people very quickly from the fairgrounds over to the new Palmdale Airport. And, and another shameless plug, and then the mall and back over to the fairgrounds. That's a fairly expensive project. We'll have to do a lot of fundraising, but it's something that we have, that we're looking at for the future. It would be elevated, so there wouldn't be great crossings. We wouldn't, we wouldn't add to congestion the way most light rail does, because it runs on surfaces, and so you have to get through intersections, and someone's gotta stop either way. Elevated monorail system, fifty-five miles an hour across town, whatever stops, we decide to give it. So that's, that's our kind of fiber plan. And another milestone we'll be celebrating tomorrow, invite all of you to be there at the BYD factory around ten AM. We'll be celebrating our first million miles of electric bus service. And remember, we've achieved that within just a couple of years with only about half our fleet. Significant, we'll share some numbers tomorrow about how many gallons of diesel fuel that's eliminated, how many metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions we've avoided, and how many, how many dollars that translates. We'll have those numbers, and I don't wanna kind of give away tomorrow, so we'll announce those numbers tomorrow, but they're significant. BYD, at the same time, a local manufacturer in Anlo Valley, will be celebrating their three-hundredth bus off the assembly line tomorrow. So it's a big day for both of us, another milestone achieved. Other than that, it's been an exciting year. I'm grateful for the operative service community and serve as your CEO of the Anlo Valley Transit. I appreciate it. Any questions? Not, not quite half. We're at about thirty-five buses. By the end of the year, we should be at eighty buses.
Okay, so in the meantime, we still have to continue buying some diesel.
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's going down every month.
Right.
Yeah.
So just, and for everyone's, just information, last year, Mr. Corio served on that board with me, and this year, Mr. Loa's on there. So we're, we're trying to do some, trying to do some, some good things. The idea is to make that bus a mode of choice for you. And so when we have people telling us, you're not serving us here, we need to fix it there. I'm a hearing officer for the unmet needs, and there are very few unmet needs because we're, we're handling them. Sometimes we can do them better, and that's what we're working on. But I wanted, I wanted Macy to come here today so everyone could see him, because this is where it stops, because this is the guy that's running the show over there. And if you got a problem, you come and talk to us, and we're gonna talk to him, and he'll probably be the guy that calls you back. So I, there, there's a lot of very cool things, the advances we've made in the last year and a half or so. We've come more in the last year and a half to two years than we have in the last twelve years. So, and he's helping to drive that now, and he's listening to the board, making things work. We're complying with a lot of the things. I was a skeptic on these electric buses, and now that we're looking at the, all the statistical analysis that these guys are doing for us, you know, I tell you what, it's pretty cool.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for being here this evening, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Ride the bus. Okay, thank you for allowing me to deviate, but I think it was important with everyone being here that we hear that. So we're moving on, and we're back on to item nine, public hearings. So who's doing the staff report on this one? Caught you in the back of the room, Ben?
Well, Mayor, and members of the city council, we have actually four public hearing items that are all related to each other. They're all building off of each other. Excuse me. And they all have to do with the formation of a community choice aggregation program. As you may recall, about two weeks ago, the council made a decision to move forward with the formation of a community trace aggregation program and approved the first contract needed to start that process. So these are the next steps that now we're gonna embark upon for doing that, for, for the formation of a community choice aggregation program. And so we'll start with item nine point one, which is to adopt ordinance number fifteen twenty-four, establishing a Palmdale community choice aggregation program.
This is, this is the first step, this is the enabling ordinance?
Yes.
Do we need the ordinance right into the record?
I believe so, right?
It's okay.
Okay. So it's ordinance number fifteen twenty-four, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Palmdale, California, establishing a community choice aggregation program pursuant to the Public Utilities Code.
Okay, I need a voice vote to introduce the ordinance, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. Okay, we'll open a public hearing at this time. Receive any testimony? Please keep your testimony focused on the enabling ordinance. Anybody wish to speak on the enabling ordinance? Seeing none, move to close public hearing, please.
So moved.
And a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. I'm sorry?
I don't oppose.
Oh, okay. So we, you're opposed to closing the public hearing?
Well, if you hadn't have rushed it in the beginning of the first one, I would have opposed that, too, so.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm, I'm consistent across the board. I'm opposed.
Okay, so based on that, I need a, I need a motion on, to adopt ordinance fifteen twenty-four.
So moved.
Mr. Loa?
Second.
Second by Mr. Corio. And we can show our votes on item nine point one. Yeah, it was four yes, one no, and Ms. Benton Court voting no. Nine point two, Ben?
Okay, so this is resolution number CC two thousand nineteen dash zero four zero, and it's to authorize the city's entry into a joint exercise of powers program, or what commonly is referred to as a JPA, with California Choice Energy Authority. And what this, what this resolution will do is it'll authorize, let it direct the city manager to, well, first of all, the, we need to pass this resolution so that we can join this JPA, which is California Choice Energy, or it's sometimes referred to as CCEA or CalChoice, and they're the ones who are gonna be doing the work to get the program started and help us with the implementation of a CCA. And so this, we would end up joining it, and what you have before you with the sample agreement is not the final form of the agreement. There are, there will be some edits and changes, because there's certain, there currently, there are, I believe, five members of this JPA, and so they all need to approve it and finalize it so that we can also join and be a part of that JPA. And there's about four other jurisdictions that are also looking to do the same. One thing I need to point out is that since two weeks ago, there has been some changes to the implementation timeline, and so we need to outline that. Originally, we were saying that everything was going to start in May of 2020, but we have learned that due to some changes that are happening at Edison, we won't be able to start residential and municipal, in other words, the bills that we're paying, until about September of 2020, and then commercial wouldn't be able to begin until May of 2021.
Okay. All right, so you wanna read the, read the ordinance, please? Do we need to, yeah, I think we need to. Adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen dash zero four zero, resolution to city council, the City of Palmdale, authorizing cities entering joint. authorizing cities entering joint exercise of power agreement regarding the California Choice Energy Authority. Do I have a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Oh wait, we, uh, we need to, uh, public, uh, testimony each one of these. So on nine point two, on the resolution for the, uh, JPA, is there anybody that wishes to, uh, address the council on that topic?
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Juan Blanco, and I, I don't really believe that the city should go into the power business. Uh, utility companies were structured to handle outages and things of that magnitude when there's service interruption.
They, they still ha- they're still gonna still handle the infrastructure.
They're still gonna handle the infra- infrastructure, so, uh, as sitting in the audience, I'm not really clear on all of this, so is it possible to kinda elaborate for the people who are sitting here to understand what it is that the city is about to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ben, can you give us the, uh, the, um, well, let's, motion to close public hearing, please?
So moved.
Okay, anybody opposed? Yeah, opposed, uh, very good.
I want to oppose the closing of the public meeting.
So no, no opposition? Uh, motion carries. Ben, can you give, uh, the, uh, the Reader's Digest version, being that we've gone over this several times in a number of meetings, but Juan hasn't been here, and maybe a couple of the other folks might wanna hear.
Sure, the way a community trace aggregation program works is, um, what happens is that it could be a city or a quasi-governmental agency can choose to form a community trace aggregation program for their members. And the way it works is that the utility, which in our case is Southern California Edison, they still will maintain the infrastructure. It's not that the City of Palmdale will be a utility like, uh, what, like a LEDWP, or Glendale Water and Power, Burbank Water and Power, et cetera. So they'll still maintain the infrastructure, and they will still get energy to the residents, and they will continue with the billing of the residents. However, the bill will now be cut in half, and, or pretty much in half, where half would be for the infrastructure, which would continue to go to Edison, but the other half would be for the actual procurement of the power, where that power comes from, if it's a power plant, or renewable energy, or whatever the sources are. Instead of it being Edison's responsibility to purchase that power and to comply with all laws that real, that are relating to the renewable energy mix that needs to be with, with that power being supplied to everyone, now the jurisdiction, which in our case would be the city, is going to take over that portion of it. And so we will be able to, uh, choose who's supplying us with the power that's going to be used by our residents, what kind of renewable mix there is, et cetera.
Right, and, and the residents can also choose various tiers of renewables, so those that, that, um, wanna have a, a totally green component, have the ability to choose it, and the ones that, that wanna have, uh, another mix, they have the ability to choose that as well, correct?
Right, state law right now requires about thirty-three percent, and so what you see most CCA is doing is that they provide the bare minimum renewable mix, which is thirty-three percent. Then if you want slightly more, you can go with a fifty percent mix, or if you wanna go a hundred percent renewables, you can, uh, pay a premium on your energy, so you can have a hundred percent renewable energy.
I think it's also important to note that those residents that don't wanna be part of this CCA, they don't have to. They can stay with Edison if they choose to do so. Is that correct, Ben?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, there's going to be, uh, I believe, uh, two months ahead of implementation. Uh, we're going to do a mass outreach, trying to reach every resident within the City of Palmdale. Well, now that it's being split in two, it's gonna be two mass outreach campaigns, first for residential in, uh, in about August, uh, or July or August of, uh, well, July of twenty twenty, letting them know that this program's gonna start soon, and giving them the option to opt out if they'd like. And so there would be a, a mass outreach effort, and they have those two months, and then the two months after, to opt out with no penalties. After that, there could be some charges that they may have to incur to opt out or opt back into Edison. And so by law, that's requ- we're required to give them that option. If they say nothing, then they're automatically, uh, put into the, uh, the Palmdale CCA program.
And, and who's the members of the CCA that you're joining?
Who are the members?
Who are the members?
Uh, right now of, uh, CalChoice, or?
The one that you want the city to join.
Okay, yeah, the current members of CalChoice are, uh, well, the City of Lancaster, and it's called Lancaster Choice Energy, the City of San Jacinto, which is San Jacinto Power, Pico Rivera, which is Pico Rivera Innovative Municipal Energy, or otherwise referred to as Prime, Rancho Mirage, which is Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, and, uh, Apple Valley, which is Apple Valley Choice Energy.
And who oversees all of this?
Well, it's a JPA, and the board to the J, the Board for CalChoice, or the JPA, is the City of Ca- of Lancaster City Council.
So the City Council for Lancaster is in charge?
They oversee the contract, and, uh, they, uh, they, uh, they handle the contractors, and then we work with their contractors to decide how to run the program, yes.
And, and so we want, our residents wanna be able to see any benefit until two thousand twenty, but how much is gonna be coming out of our general fund this year and next year?
Well, uh, we're, we have to relook at the numbers, because originally there was a resource adequacy requirement, and that was about seven hundred thousand dollars, but the way it works out with the implementation in September, looks like we won't need that seven hundred thousand dollars just yet, even though it's, we, we may end up not generating enough revenue and need it for the next year for the implementation of the program, but originally, we did an interfund loan request for one point five million from general fund reserves.
And that would be taken out this year?
Uh, no.
That's what we're, that's what we're proposing?
Well, well, we're only gonna use the money that we need, and like I mentioned, since that decision, we learned of a change in implementation period, and so that amount will hopefully, uh, decrease, but, um, we haven't come back with a new resolution to replace that interfund loan, the previous interfund resolution, and, uh, we're, um, we're anticipating that with the services that start in September, by the time April of twenty twenty-one comes around, when the resource adequacy funds are due, we'll have enough in the reserves so that we won't need interfund loan money to be able, uh, put that money in there.
And that, that money came out of the general fund, correct?
Yes, the general fund reserves.
Thank you.
Well, one thing to point out is, um, these programs have already generated money for those cities that you mentioned, Pico Rivera and Rancho Mirage. I actually went into their websites, uh, that are actually now providing power to the residents. The City of Pico Rivera just started doing this about a year ago now, and they've already generated one million dollars. The City of Rancho Mirage recently started doing this too, and about six, seven months ago, and they're already generating money from this program. So the fact that we have to invest money, that's just a fact of life in any business activity. You want to get into business, there's gonna be a cost associated with that. The cost that is associated with this is coming out of the general fund, and the idea is to save money for the residents, the commercial businesses, and the aerospace industry who use a lot of energy.
The more you use, the more you're gonna save.
More you're gonna save.
Kind of the.
Kind of the cause, uh, idea, the more you shop, the more you save. So these agencies are already generating money on these new programs. Again, one year ago, Pico Rivera, already a million dollars, Rancho Mirage, seven, six months ago, half a million dollars. There's a potential that we can generate money to pay back the general fund money that we are loaning to start this program, which the goal is again to save the residents money. We know Edison's rates are gonna go up. This gives us some local control, because with the council, we'll be able to, uh, set the rates. That's something that we are gonna be able to do.
Okay.
There's some, there's some overview by the City of Lancaster, that's the, uh, they're, they're essentially the umbrella organization for this, but we have decisions that we make here, including calling the rates and other, other factors of that sort.
Right, they, uh, choose the consultants we're gonna work with, and then, uh, we, we will work with those consultants to do our own programs. So, uh, yes, they won't be able to, uh, for example, dictate to us what kind of rates we're gonna use, or how much renewable energy we're gonna offer, et cetera.
And there's an opt-out for the city in case things aren't working out. There's a period of time in which we can do that.
Uh, yes, in theory, but, uh, there's some, some investments that we'll, we'll be making.
Sure.
Going up to that point, so.
Right, we understand that.
Uh, there's, there, that has to be taken into consideration.
There's all frames at each one of these junctures.
So I, I know that, um, since our last conversation two weeks ago, that the seven hundred thousand dollar figure has changed. Has the savings per household changed also? Cause I think last time we discussed it, didn't they say it was gonna be about fifty cents?
Uh, well, it's, um, actually, it's one percent of generation, like I mentioned. Uh, roughly, it's half and half. It'll vary from household to household, and it all depends on how much you spend on energy. So it's one percent of generation, so if you assume that fifty percent would be generation and fifty percent would be infrastructure, that would mean it would be about half a percent savings, so if you spend a hundred dollars a month on your energy bill, it would be about fifty cents. But it also depends on how much you're spending on energy.
Wish I had a hundred dollar bill.
Thank you.
Yeah, remember the last time I had one of those?
And for the large, uh, you know, contractors and businesses that are operating here, who use a lot more energy, their savings will be commensurate to, to that same rate.
Uh, yes, and, uh, we, yeah, we've, uh, done our calculations, and so we believe, uh, citywide, in the first year of implementation, there would be, um, our residents would probably save about three hundred twenty thousand dollars or so total, and our businesses would save about a hundred fifty to a hundred eighty thousand dollars in the year. But that's all, that's all businesses, all multifamily, uh, all our, our, um, our own act, the City of Palmdale's activities, et cetera.
They, they clocked in their class time, they're good. All right, uh, do I have a motion on this item, please?
I saw move.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Loa? And second by Mr. Carrillo.
Did you press it? Yeah, mine didn't show up.
All right. Did you push a button, sir?
I'm Richard Loa and Juan Carrillo.
Yes. All right. Any item carries four to one, Ms. Benton Court? No. Uh, item nine point three, review, uh, public hearing review of Resolution Two Thousand Nineteen Dash Forty-two, Resolution Number CC Two Thousand Nineteen Dash Forty-two, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, directing city manager to submit bond payments and/or negotiate, finalize, execute agreements for establishing the CCA?
Okay, so this is more on the financial side of, uh, running the CCA. First of all, uh, since we're moving forward with establishing a CCA, the Public Utilities Commission will require a hundred thousand dollar bond, which we would need to pay pretty quickly after this council meeting. And so that would go to the Public Utilities Commission, and they will keep that money on hand in case, for some reason, our CCA can't operate from one day to the next, then that bond would be activated so that Edison could, uh, quickly provide energy so that we don't have mass power outage the very next day and, uh, the, all the damage that would cause. Uh, that's, uh, the initial amount of the bond. Their, the Public Utilities Commission is currently looking at it, and, uh, we believe it'll probably increase by about forty-seven thousand. We put in the staff report just in case, uh, up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. At that point, we would either have to submit another bond for fifty thousand dollars, or the Public Utilities Commission is also looking at maybe having another agency hold that bond. So they may give us the hundred thousand dollars back, and we would have to give the hundred fifty thousand dollar bond to the agency that they have selected to hold that bond.
And where is that money coming out of?
That's from that interfund loan from the general fund reserves. And then, uh, beyond that, we have, uh, four agreements that we, uh, that this resolution would authorize the city manager to negotiate, finalize, and execute to, uh, run the CCA program. Uh, one is the, uh, services agreement with, uh, CalChoice for running the Community Trace Aggregation Program. This agreement is different from the agreement that was approved a couple of weeks ago, in the sense that the one approved a couple of weeks ago is to get us to the implement, implementation start date. This agreement would kick in once the CCA is up and running, and it would be the services they would provide to the City of Palmdale to run the CCA. The other remaining three is for a security agreement, deposit account control agreement, and an intercreditor and collateral agency agreement. These agreements are with the bank that would, uh, hold the money for the city for the implementation of the CCA program, where when the city's receiving the payments for, uh, for the CCA and the, uh, the, the use of power, it would go into this bank account, and the, uh, power generators who provided the power to our residents would pull the money that they're due out of that account.
Does this essentially like an escrow account?
Yes, and, and it's referred to as, of the lockbox account.
Right. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody on this particular component of it have any comments? Seeing none, motion to close public hearing, please?
So moved.
Uh, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Uh, doc, so the.
Well, I need to read the time, I guess, before, uh.
Okay, I thought I read it in, just to keep it moving. Okay.
Okay, since, uh, the mayor read it? Okay, never mind.
Yeah, I wa- I wasn't sure who was gonna read what, so I just went ahead and did it for you. So we need to, uh, adopt Resolution Number CC Two Thousand Nineteen Dash Forty-two. Do I have a motion on that item, please?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Carrillo has a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop? Please show your votes. Item carries four one, Ms. Benton Court voting no.
I, I hope one day you prove me wrong, but at this moment, I am not convinced.
We understand. Dissensions sometimes good. So item nine point four, public hearing for, and review for approval of the Southern California Edison, uh, Community Choice Aggregator Service Agreement Number A Six Six One Two.
So this one isn't a resolution, it's just the approval of an agreement. What this agreement will do is it'll formalize, uh, our relationship with Edison once the CCA program is up and running. Like I mentioned, Edison is still responsible for maintaining our infrastructure. They also will do the billing, and will give us the money due for the energy procurement side that we would have, we will, we will do with the CCA program. Uh, there's really no, um, negotiating or no, no changes we can do to this agreement. The agreement is approved by the California Public Utilities Commission. The rates that Edison would, uh, charge us for their work is an approved tariff by the California Public Utilities Commission, and it's, if we're gonna move forward with the CCA, we just need to sign this agreement, and then Edison will countersign, and the rules of, uh, running the CCA and our relationship with them is.
It's a level playing field with all the players out there, then?
Right, it's the Public Utilities Commission saying, this is how the program is gonna run.
Right.
If, uh, such and such jurisdiction forms a CCA.
Right. Okay, uh, so we'll go ahead and, uh, open a public hearing on this item. Anybody wishing to testify or provide, uh, comments on the, this particular item relative to the Edison agreement? Come on forward, nobody?
Move, move to close the public hearing.
Okay, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, um, so the staff recommendation is approve the agreement number A Six Six One Two, Southern California Edison Community Choice Aggregator Systems Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Loa with a motion, and Mr. Carrillo with the second? And go ahead and show your votes. And that is four to one, Ms. Benton Court voting no. And we're at item nine point five. Chuck, who's, you do on this one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes, sir. Mayor and, uh, members of the City Council, item nine point five is a public hearing, uh, for the adoption of Resolution Number CC Two Zero One Nine Dash Zero Two Four, which will approve the engineer's report for annexation of the two assessor parcels, uh, Three Oh Two Oh Dash Zero Zero One Dash Zero Three Six and Zero Three Seven to the City of Palmdale Streetlight District Number Four as annexation number Two Oh One Nine Dash One Seven Five. This is for the Guidance Charter School, um, annexation of the streetlights into the district is a, is a normal, uh, process that we go through with new developments. The annual assessment for these two parcels is approximately seventeen thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. And, uh, I guess I will read the resolution. It's Resolution Number CC Dash Two Oh One Nine Dash Zero Two Four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the engineer's report, ordering the annexation of assessor parcel numbers Three Zero Two Zero Dash Zero Zero One Dash Zero Three Six and Three Zero Two Zero Dash Zero Zero and three zero two zero dash zero zero one dash zero three seven. Guidance Charter School located at three eight three eight East Avenue R into the City of Palmdale's Streetlight Maintenance Assessment District Number Four as annexation number two oh one nine dash one seven five. And levy a collection of assessments within such annexation for fiscal year two, uh, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And confirm, confirming diagrams and assessment pursuit to the provisions of part two of Division fifteen of the California Streets and Highway Code and as provided by Article eight D of the California Constitution. So I guess at this time, uh, we-
City Clerk will, uh, open the ballots?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Sorry? Oh, sorry. Sorry, thirteen D. I put my glasses back on. Thank you, Matt.
Mayor, open the ballot and the ballot is voted yes, the assessment passes.
Okay, so, uh, do we have any, uh, public testimony on this? Uh, understanding this is strictly on the issue of, uh, uh, taking those, uh, streetlights and being able to get the city paid on it. Anybody wish to testify in that item? Seeing none, move to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I just have a question. It, is it in fact still, um, Guidance Charter School?
This question may as well. Well, that, that, that's a good question. I, I honestly don't know. I mean, that's the way the application for the annexation was, was written, so.
Okay. I, I was just curious, I didn't know where, what that, what was going on with that whole thing, so.
I don't know, maybe, maybe Jim knows or somebody else, but yeah, I'm not, I, I'm not aware.
Mr. Perdita?
If it's not Guidance Charter School, it's the receivers for Guidance Charter School, so.
Got it.
Um, it's still the, uh, the investment group.
It's still Lobo then, so.
It's still Lobo.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I need, uh, I need a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen dash zero two four, please?
So moved.
And Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Mr. Loa, there's a second? And? Motion carries five zero. Okay, I have, uh, ordinance number fifteen twenty-one. Item nine point six.
Thank you, um, ordinance number fifteen twenty-one, this is the title, um, is an ordinance of-
For people that don't know you, who your name is?
Pardon me, Megan Tiger.
Thank you.
Senior Planner. Um, it's ordinance number fifteen twenty-one, which is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California, amending the Palmdale Municipal Code to streamline how the code is used, clarify and eliminate ambiguity, and to ensure consistency with state law, the Palmdale Municipal Code and the General Plan. The zoning code has not been comprehensively updated since nineteen ninety-four and as a result, the zoning code contains issues with organization, consistency and flow, which makes finding and understanding certain requirements very difficult. As discussed in the upcoming slides, uh, major components of the amendment include consolidating definitions to remove ambiguities, creating land use matrix, um, streamlining approval of minor applications, ensuring consistency with the general plan, and enhancing legibility of public hearing notice signage. Over time, um, cum- cumulative amendments to the code have resulted in a document that has internally consistencies and duplicative provisions. In addition, the code has, uh, not been kept up to date with evolving uses and development and new businesses have entered into the marketplace since the code was last updated comprehensively in nineteen ninety-four. And as a result, the code can be difficult to interpret and is often, uh, circuitous. Definitions are also scattered throughout the zoning code rather than being consolidated into, um, the definitions section. And as such, definitions for signs, alcoholic beverage establishments, um, hazardous waste facilities amongst others are proposed to be moved to the existing definitions section. One of the larger changes to the zoning code is the proposed removal of all of the allowable uses listed within each section and placement of those uses into two separate comprehensive matrices. One would include residential and agricultural zones and the other would include all the other zones. Uh, the matrices would simplify and streamline staff time spent reviewing the code to determine allowable uses and enhance the user friendliness to residents and developers. The amendment also proposes to streamline temporary use and special event permit processes by omitting the findings for approval, uh, which will make the permits ministerial rather than discretionary. These applications currently require additional time for processing by staff, but omitting the findings will allow staff to approve these permits over the counter as long as the applications meet the criteria specified within the municipal code. The amendment will also elongate timeframes for certain temporary uses. The California Government Code requires consistency between the city's general plan and the zoning ordinance. Currently, the zoning ordinance allows a higher density than the general plan for property designated as, as medium residential. And in order to remedy that inconsistency and clear up confusion for, um, future interpretation of the code, that section is proposed to be omitted so that density can be derived directly from the general plan. Um, the amendment also allows staff to modify public hearing notice signage as needed. Um, in an effort to enhance legibility of the signs, design guidelines have been created which include in enlarged letters signifying the type of application that is being, um, proposed and the, uh, requirement for different background colors for different types of, um, applications. And this one is gray, but there's actually no gray color, there was just no black and white. Subsequent to, um, the planning commission hearing for this amendment, the City Manager requested a minor revision to the definition for single serve um, containers as shown here, um, on the, on the screen in red. And also, um, the duplicative, um, use for museum was removed from the land use matrix. Um, with that, the City Council has several options. The first would be to adopt ordinance fifteen twenty-one as amended, approving the zoning ordinance amendment. The second would be to continue the item, the third would be to deny, and option one is recommended, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Who, who came up with this idea?
Who, I think everybody.
Because I think it's amazing.
Yeah.
And it's really long overdue. This is so streamlined and so easy to understand.
I think all the corners take credit for that.
It's an amazing project that you guys have been working on and, and congratulations to all of you that worked on this, because this is a lot of work, but it's gonna make life easier for our residents, our developers, and everybody else. So thank you so much for putting the time into doing this.
The council will assist in the, uh, adoption of the new general plan and preparation towards that. As I understand it.
That's correct, and this is also just the first phase in streamlining our codes and, and making them more consistent. This is kind of the low hanging fruit. Um, there's more to come.
Yeah.
This is the kind of stuff that we get the calls from, from the business community, that there's an issue and, you know, I, I can't figure it out and I go back in there. I've been dealing with the code for thirty-nine years in, in, in my profession. And, uh, and I've sometimes sit there and scratch my head, try to figure out, you know, where's this taking me, you know? So, uh, I think that's, uh, I, I was pretty impressed with the, uh, with this being, this is the first pass on this, but there's quite a bit included in this. Um, we have, uh, uh, any public comment on this item? Anybody out there? I know people that are interested in this, anybody? Anybody? Just, uh, if you'd have a slip in, just make sure you state your name so the city clerk knows who you are.
Uh, Gus Camacho, Camacho Autos, Camacho Mitsubishi. Council, uh, thank you so much for, uh, for streamlining things. So, uh, we are, uh, we're really happy that you guys are working with the business community. Um, it's very complex. Um, yeah, I think it, almost every one of you has at some time gotten a call from me when we're trying to pull a permit for something and this makes it a lot easier. Went through the language, looks good, um, at least on the section that, that has to do with the auto mall and our, our offsite sale, so. Really appreciate the help. Uh, keep, keep doing what you guys are doing and make this a much friendlier business city, because, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's well deserved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this? Okay, need a motion to close, uh, public hearing?
So moved.
Hey, a motion of second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Hearing done? Carries. Uh, we need a, uh, staff recommendation is to adopt ordinance number fifteen twenty-one, do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
All right, okay. It was Laura, I'll be second.
You guys, can I wrestle over the, uh, button there?
I got the button.
Come over here.
Okay.
But really good job, you guys, really congratulations on that.
Yeah, this is, this is overdue and it's something that every time I meet with the businesses, that, uh, I, you know, keep, we keep telling them, we're working on it, working on it. So I got, uh, Benton Court and, uh, Bishop as a first and a second on that, please show your votes. Yeah, it's, uh, five to zero. Thank you. Good job. Nine point seven.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Staff is requesting a public hearing to hear public comment and review proposal to amend the city's twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen action plan to reprogram Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funds of ninety thousand dollars from the seventeen eighteen unprogrammed to the seventeen eighteen ADA compliance facility improvements. And also to reprogram CDVG funds of a hundred thousand from seventeen eighteen unprogrammed to eighteen nineteen ADA compliance facility improvements. And two, to authorize the City Manager or his designee to sign all documents necessary to amend the said action plans and obtain HUD approval.
Okay, so on, uh, item nine point seven, which is to, uh, reprogram some funding uh, to, uh, for the ADA compliance and things of that nature, anybody have any comments on nine point seven? Do you have any speaker slips?
Uh, no.
No? Anybody? Okay, we need a voice vote to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, without opposition, so ordered. Staff recommend, his eight, recommendation is to approve the recommendations and findings as listed in the staff report.
I have a second.
We have, uh, Mr. Loa and I have Mr. Bishop.
Start voting.
That item carries five to zero.
Thank you.
The item eleven.
I am going to recuse myself from this at an abundance of caution because I have a property that may be within five hundred feet of Avenue S.
Oh, really?
I know where five hundred feet is for me. Put the musical headset on. Mr. Euler, oh, Mr. Robert, you know, guys gotta put the right name on this sheet here, okay?
We all look alike.
Mr. Euler, stand in, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Uh, last minute, the City Council directed that a study of the Avenue S corridor be completed before considering changes to the general plan land uses in the area. The study would provide empirical data to evaluate proposed land use changes sooner than completion of the general plan update. At the time, the project was anticipated to take approximately six months and cost about four hundred thousand dollars. A preferred bidder was selected and after five months of negotiation, they withdrew from the process. Staff then evaluated three options of how to proceed with the study. Option one was enter into negotiations with the second bidder, um, whose cost proposal was over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a timeline that wouldn't end until mid twenty twenty. Option two was to re-advertise and solicit new bids, but that cost estimate, of course, is unknown and the conclusion would probably be not until early twenty twenty-one. Option three was to analyze the impacts within the general plan update, which is currently underway and is estimated to con- to conclude in late twenty twenty-one or early twenty twenty-two. Incorporating the analysis into the general plan update reduces the potential for contradictory results, promotes a more comprehensive look at the area and saves approximately five hundred thousand dollars. Staff has discussed this option with Rayme and Associates, the general plan consultant, and they stated that the area is covered within their scope of work and would not add to the cost. However, if they were to break the study out as a separate report, it would result in additional costs and likely would not be available until early twenty twenty-one. Due to the change in the timeline and the budget, since the project was originally discussed and the preferred bidder's withdrawal, it is recommended that the City Council direct staff to suspend the preparation of a separate study to analyze the impacts on Avenue S corridor and analyze that within the general plan currently underway. That concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have any, uh, questions for the staff or a call for the public comments?
No questions from you this time.
Okay, do we have any speaker cards in this item?
Yes, we do. We have Greg Kwan from R Y Properties.
Good evening, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Greg Kwan from R Y Properties. And, uh, we're a development firm that has a number of, um, both commercial and residential projects in the City of Palmdale. We've been here for a long time. And we're just here to hopefully, um, talk about our project. One of our projects that we have is this Quail Valley on Avenue S. And, um, so I'm here with my associate, that's gonna give you more details about the project if you have any questions. And so we would just like to have that, our project considered possibly independent of, of your discussions and in, uh, the corridor study or the general plan. And so if you have any questions for me, I'm here, but otherwise I'll turn it over to my associate and he can give me more detailed plans.
Okay.
Discussion.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Steve Jenkins, uh, Quail Valley LLC, excuse my throat. Um, um, let me give you just a, a real, very quick background on the project. Um, I've been working on it since two thousand and four. It died in the recession and came back in two thousand and thirteen. Um, and right now, this project is tied up in the, in the corridor study. Um, we believe that the best use for that project, in fact, we know the best use is, is gonna be residential. There's very limited frontage, I sent you an email today. Uh, you can't get to the project, it's all detention based and the, the entry is fixed, so it's gonna be residential. Uh, it doesn't matter how many studies you do. Um, little background, the project application fees a hundred and thirty-four thousand were submitted in March of twenty eighteen, uh, four months before the study was even commissioned. Um, all of the required studies and the technical reports have been submitted in order for the project to be de- deemed complete. Community, uh, community meetings have been held, the city published a notice of preparation in the initial study last year. The required public scoping meeting has occurred, public and agency comments have been received and the comment period i- is closed. We have very active, uh, community meeting and, and response period, we have for, uh, fifteen years. Uh, the applicant has voluntarily withheld a request for a formal complete designation pending the corridor study, which was to have taken six months, so we waited around for it. Uh, six months has turned to eighteen months and now there's discussion that will be an additional two to three years. Uh, over five hundred thousand dollars in third-party technical study costs have been spent, including, uh, over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on recent biological studies. These studies have a finite shelf life and soon, and will soon be stale. We actually have biologist scheduled to go out there day after tomorrow to do another thirty-six thousand dollar study, um, that was one of the requests from California Department of Fish and Wildlife on the NLP. Is that money gonna be lost? What do we do? I, I, I have no idea and it seems unreasonable to hold us to a, a, a moving timeframe. Um, just a couple more things. Um, another two or three year delay will essentially cause the project to start over. All those technical studies will be dead, all that biology will be dead, and that money will be gone. Um, there are no institutional investors on this project, as such, the owners are personally financially impacted by any delay in additional cost. Um, finally, we're not looking for any verification on how the council's gonna act on this. Uh, we, we, you can't do that, you wouldn't do that, we're not looking for that tonight. All we're looking for is that we believe this project's gonna stand on its own, it's gonna be a, a great benefit to the project, but let's let the process decide that and we'll have a, we'll have a good process on it. We believe it is. Not everybody agrees with us and, and we need to have this come to a public hearing. Um, we, we started this before there was a corridor study. Um, the owners are subject to, to losing a lot of money and we're looking for Quail Valley in particular because we know what the use is gonna be to be pulled out.
Thank you, sir. Good timing.
Yeah, it was good timing.
Is there a wait? Was there gonna be one more public comment?
Yeah, is there any, any, anybody else, anybody else who wanted to come on in this item before we close the public hearing?
Move to close the public.
Second? I need a second?
A second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
So my question is, is there a way that we can carve out this particular project and let the rest of it go on with the, uh, study?
It's, it's up to the discretion of the City Council.
So, I-
Because this option three, for instance, doesn't provide for a carve-out of Quail Valley. So how do we incorporate that thought into, into the, one of these three options?
That would just be an amendment to the motion.
So what if, what if we were to- So what if, what if we were to do something along the lines of, uh, at this point, suspend the, the corridor study? Incorporate that into the general plan? Have the, um, uh, work with the contractor to accelerate that area to the extent that it can be? And have, uh, applicants, um, submit their projects pursuant to the required, uh, um, processes? It does, you know, um, I can, I can make that a motion, but is, is that, does that?
All projects in the corridor or just the one?
Well, I, I, I think that they, I think it's hard to single out one project, but at the same time, I think that they need to include a justification as to why they shouldn't be. And this one, this one on the surface sounds pretty obvious. It, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an entry and a, uh, detention basin. The public hearing will root that all out, but of course, at a public hearing, there's a determination that this needs more extensive studies, that will bear out in the course of that public hearing. But we've been, we've been, uh, it's, it's, you know, we've been fiddling while Rome burns, you know? Uh, there's a window on this stuff and, uh, it's gonna be, uh, somebody's great-grandkids gonna start looking at, there's windows of opportunity here and, uh, and I, it looks like, it looks like, right, in, in reference to that project, they're jumping through all the necessary hoops and I don't think that we should be tying these things up any further because we ran into some snafus with a contractor on this thing. That's not their fault. It's not the community's fault and it's not the city's fault and, and everybody gets put into limbo on that. So I think, you know.
Could we make it clear, well, first of all, my question to you, Mr. Bruce, is this project, Quail Valley project, is the one that's most advanced or ready to submit as soon as they do these biological studies?
Not necessarily. Um, the T R Sabida and Avenue S, uh, project is on an equal footing with this one as far as being ready to move forward towards completeness in public hearings.
I mean, but the, the eminence of, uh, them having to act on, uh, on the, on their biological study within days, I mean, it seems to me like there's an urgent situation for, uh, a developer that's got clean hands here and has done, you know, all of the different steps that have to be made. And this, uh, essentially, uh, would work as a moratorium on their project. Uh, I'm not sure that's a fair thing to do to, to what they've done, the investments they've made.
To add to that, um, we just talked about being developer friendly.
Yes, we did.
So I don't think that it's, uh, fair that, um, putting this on hold or this project in particular, um, because are, are we anticipating any changes in the land use through the general plan?
Yes.
Adoption in that area?
Yes, they're looking to significantly increase the densities for the residential development in that area.
So is that the main concern, the potential to change the land uses through the general plan?
Uh, this was city council's direction, um, to put a hold on all developments that are proposed in that corridor. We currently have three projects that are on hold, two of which I would say are on equal footing as far as being, you know, going through and having conducted the studies and moved forward. The third one is a little, um, greener on its design phase, but they are also having, sitting back waiting for.
But when we first, when we first brought this forward, the, the concept was that we were looking at, um, uh, we wanted to evaluate, the, the, the big concerns were whatever gets developed in there, the, the big question was gonna be traffic. And the other thing was from the, from this, from a city perspective is how does the city, um, leverage whatever happens down in that area because of the freeway proximity, um, and looking at it from a, uh, a commercial and retail component in there? Um, so, uh, that's not gonna have that. I mean, those are truthy, I was here when we made the decision to, you know, um, uh, look at this Avenue Cor, uh, as corridor, corridor study. Geez, it was ten years ago, I think, we first looked at that? Yeah, that was, that, that was, that was another generation ago. So let me just cl, help clarify that. Let, uh, I moved that we suspended the, the, the study and in addition, um, have projects submit their requisite reports, including justification as to their, um, um, why they shouldn't have to do anything more extensive relative to Avenue S corridor.
May I make a, a, a point here? And that is, I'm not sure that that gives clarity to the Quail Valley project. That is to say, um, I, I think it would be clear and perhaps, uh, Mr. Ditzhazy could, could advise us as to whether we can separate out the Quail Valley project because they're the ones that are asking for it. They're the ones that have made a presentation and have been here tonight. And would it be appropriate legally, uh, to separate out Quail Valley and then allow the rest of the study to go forward? In, in terms of getting rid of the Avenue S corridor study and rolling it into the general plan study, that's fine. Um, in terms, the, the policy from the council is that they wanted everybody to wait until they got everything else done, that whether it was the corridor S study or the general plan. So at this point, there's still existing zoning, there's still existing, you know, planning guidelines and everything on all of these areas. And I think Quail Valley's already within that, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, your, your development is according to the current zoning? No? Okay.
Right, it'll need a J P A.
Okay, okay.
The G, uh, G P.
But, but there isn't anything, there's a, it, it's a policy decision by the council to go ahead and say, okay, let this project go forward. You could do it with the same, the other one that Rob referred to. Um, they come forward, they, they need to get moving. Um, you know, it's, it, it could complicate things down the road, like for the traffic and everything like that. I'm not saying it wouldn't, but by the same token, you know, making them wait another two years or three years isn't reasonable when it's really a policy of council to suspend, um, you know, try, try to stop everything. It's almost a moratorium in a way.
Exactly.
Which, which was not, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, I don't think it was formally adopted in that way. So for them to come in with especially existing land uses, they're, they're, they would be in there within their rights to say, look, we're, we're going with the existing land uses, let's do it. If they're changing them, that's like I said, it could complicate things down the road. I don't know if they're increasing density, lowering den, you know, decreasing density and all of that.
Bottom line, Mr. Ditzhazy, um, we could carve out the Quail Valley project from the rest of this and adopt option three.
You can, you can change the policy and say, you know, as projects come forward, if they're ready to go, you know, I'm not saying you abandon it all the way down the line, all the way down.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We can do it individually, right?
Yeah.
Case by case.
I, I, I really, I just uncomfortable with carve-out, that's.
I mean, you could exempt single-family, you could focus just on commercial.
Right.
There's a lot of things that you could do.
So let me break this into a couple of sections, maybe make it easier.
Well, can I, can I just say something, is that, you know, we did, you're right. We just all talked about trying to make our city more developer-friendly. Here's, here's developers that are ready to go and, and bring the housing that we are so desperate for in this community and for us to, to put any obstacle in their way right now would be foolish for us because we are desperate for housing right now. Um, so I'll, I'll let you go ahead, Mayor, with what you were gonna say, but.
But I just wanted to make one additional comment, um, and that is that of the projects that we have here, this project's the one that's most likely going to remain residential. Uh, it's, it's got a limited amount of space on, uh, or frontage on Avenue S and, uh, it's pretty well-defined as, uh, Mr. Jenkins pointed out, as to where the entrance is going to be. There won't be any commercial. This is probably going to be, uh, residential and will, no matter how the, uh, study goes, it's not gonna change what this, the nature of this project.
That's true.
So that's why I'm thinking, I mean, they're, they've come forward. Um, we want to assist development of housing. Here's something that is front and center, but they've made a presentation, they've stepped up to come here today and, and have communicated with, uh, um, members of the council and with staff. Uh, I just don't see why we, if it's, if it's appropriate legally, why we can't just carve this one out and allow the study to go on with the rest of it. And, um, that's, that's my thought on it.
Well, let me, let me try, let me try this, 'cause I got, I'm gonna run out of ink here pretty soon. I've been trying to write this all down. Um, see, all right. In the form of a motion to suspend the Avenue S corridor study at this time, move it into the general plan, uh, explore options for the contractor to accelerate, um, what he can in that area and projects shall submit their requisite reports and will include a justification as to why they shouldn't wait for the general plan update.
I have a question. What do you mean the, the, the contractor, are you referring to the?
The general plan contractor.
General plan contractor, okay.
Yeah, and, and what do you mean, they submit reports, I mean?
Well, whatever, whatever the reports are, the traffic reports, their, uh, biological reports, their, their planning documents.
So, Mr. Jenkins, all, your reports are all in?
They are.
With the exception of the biological that you're about to undertake?
All of our studies are in. Um, they've been in for several months. At, at any point in time, staff was prepared to deem our project, uh, uh, complete. Um, the reason we're doing this update is because when, when we had the notice of preparation and the initial study, one of the comments that came back from California Department of Fish and Wildlife was one of our studies was a little bit old and knowing the timeframe where we are right now, we knew by the time we get to hearings, it's definitely gonna be old. So we're electing to do that now. If we don't do it now, we have to wait till next year. In fact, if we don't do it by April fifteenth, starting it, we have to do it next year.
Yeah. Okay, let me, let me try a motion.
Before you go, Mr. Jenkins, can you remind us what type of product case that you're proposing? Is it single-family, seven thousands, first full lots, what, what type of product is it?
Well, it's interesting. It, it's single-family, the smallest one's seven thousand, the largest is five acres. They average nine thousand, not including the one-acre lots or the five-acre lots. So seven thousands, seventy-fives, eights, nines, and it goes up from there.
Are you providing open spaces, parks, how is that going to work?
Yeah, we have, we, originally in the project, back in the day, it had a twelve-acre park and part of the process with the city, that was eliminated. We have a three-and-a-half acre, um, amenity for the HOA. We have twenty-two acres of greenbelt and we have seven miles of new trail.
I think we're getting into way too much project specifics here.
That's really the project.
To know. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, one more question, Mr. Jenkins.
Sir.
If, if, um, a motion to adopt, uh, option three, which is to suspend the, uh, the study, um, has a component that I think the mayor might be proposing here in a moment, that, uh, whatever projects are available, if they submit their plans, uh, they can move forward. Is that something that, uh, would be consistent with you being able to move forward?
Sure.
Okay.
We can move forward starting tomorrow.
Okay.
So let me, I'll break that down one more time. I'll move to suspend, to, to staff option to suspend it. Uh, projects can submit their required reports, documentations, et cetera. Um, explore the, uh, general plan update contractor ability to accelerate components for that area. And I, and I ask for a second on it.
I'll second it.
Wait, wait, wait.
I was just gonna add one thing, is that they're following current, current planning and zoning, uh, criteria. So.
I'm sorry.
Well, I said that they're following current, that any app, like your app, is you're following the current law.
Right.
No, but, but, but looking to change the land uses. Um, Mr. Mayor, if I might, we've kind of taken your language and smoothed it out a little bit for us, Bjorkhouse.
But be the first.
Understand?
Yes, sir.
And it reads, direct staff to suspend preparation of the Avenue S corridor study. Study it in the general plan update. Explore options for the general plan contractor expediting this review and have applicants submit justification for proceeding with land use changes in the corridor.
And that, that would be a forthwith situation, so they don't have, we don't have to wait. They could do that tomorrow.
Right.
Right?
You understand what we're looking for, right?
Um, I would anticipate that the other two projects that are on hold would be looking to, um, provide documentation on why they should be able to proceed as well.
And, and the way that, uh, recommendation is worded does not affect him, uh, pursuing the general plan amendment?
Correct. Nobody's, nobody's waiting for the general plan update.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, well stated. That's pretty much what I said.
He made a motion, I seconded it.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second by myself and Mr. Loa.
Mr. Loa?
Yes.
Okay, this, um, what I, I'm gonna show you isn't correct, but we do have it right into the record by Rob as to what you wanted. I lost it when I looked at the motion.
Seems to be correct on the screen.
So start voting. It's based on what Rob.
Yes, that motion.
So I need one vote, Richard Loa.
All right.
Push it too hard.
There it goes.
It's four, four to zero, one abstention. Okay.
Actually, uh, he can, accuse himself.
All right, we're gonna take a break while we, um, regroup for the housing authority component of this, so we'll recess for about five minutes, let the staff get set up, let them, uh, adjust at computers or whatever. Okay?
Goodbye, Diana Love.
And I'm not even asleep. You guys are keeping me awake.
Okay.
I think I'm out of here. So you push agendas and then go back to city councils, is that correct?
Correct.
We all there? I think so. Uh... I got the wrong agenda.
Are you on the same page?
I am not. Is this one here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. All right. Yeah, the next thing, we're gonna have indoor plumbing and flush toilets. All this new stuff. Okay, so we are returning to the city council for item number thirteen and, um, so we go, jump to fourteen and this is also public comments on the housing authority as well. Non-agendized items as portion of the meeting allows an individual to address the council on any subject regarding city business not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on these items, not specifically referenced on the agenda. Please note, a three-minute limit will be imposed. Uh, for speakers other than staff members, we may need to have a response. You've got three minutes, but you don't have to use it. So Bernie, I think you were pushing to, uh, address the council here as well.
I don't know, I need to identify myself against.
Yes, this is what she gets on the record.
Hi, Bernie Longchun. I live in Palmdale on Bluebird Lane.
Yeah, that's fine. And you're representing?
And I'm representing both the Palmdale Sheriff Boosters and the, and the Palmdale Chamber of Commerce.
Congratulations, so you can come and see you all.
Firstly, I would like to, to thank the, the, the council for their generous contribution to the Palmdale Sheriff Boosters' community safety programs. Uh, we will be using that money to enhance a lot of the programs that we've already started. Uh, had conversation with our, our new captain here a bit earlier today and we're looking at putting the money in, in a program for him where they need some immediate support. It'll be available to them. So that's, that's the intent of that and we're really, really thankful that you're able to, to adjust your budget to help support those programs.
Again, something came out of the general fund reserve.
Yeah, but, you know, I think you need to take a step and talk to Mr. Partey about how that fund is actually going to be processed.
Yeah. Work the details out of support.
Yes, we absolutely will. Yes, I.
And there's an event coming up?
We have, uh, the AV Sheriff Boosters and Palmdale Sheriff Boosters are working together on our casino night that's gonna be this weekend. So it's gonna, the fun part is somebody's gonna. So, it's gonna, the fun part is somebody's gonna drive off in a thirty thousand dollars worth of car from being in the program. And you have to be present to win, so, remember that one.
What night, sir?
It's gonna be Saturday night at, what did we call the skating rink that we have in Landcave? Pioneer, Pioneer, so over in the Pioneer thing at six P M.
The old skating rink.
Yeah, it used to be, yes.
And if people want tickets, they can?
They can, they, if you contact the, either our Sheriff Boosters or their, the one in Landcave, AV, either one of them, we can get you tickets, they're sixty-five dollars for the tickets.
And they can find, Mr. Bishop is on one of the boards?
Yes.
Mr. Loa's on another board?
Yes.
So, it's not hard to find.
You betcha, you betcha, and, and lastly, I am the new CEO for the Palmdale Chamber of Commerce, and look forward to working with our city and moving forward and getting things done, working together, and that's, hopefully, this is a step in that direction to work together.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Bernie.
My name is Marsha Furman and I live in Palmdale. Tick tock, tick tock, as I stand here, the speaker's clock is winding down. The council members in front of me have to move their eyes to see the numbers decreasing. Those behind me also just have to move their glance left to know how much time I still have. For me, who the counter clock is intended, I have to move my head to get to know how much time I still have. I would request that the proper authorities start the process of researching a timer, be it numbers, lights, or other means, that will also allow myself and all other speakers to track our remaining, well, there you go.
I made sure, I heard you before, I made sure it was on there.
Well, you know.
Some people don't like it because it distracts.
Well, how about you turn it on, thank you.
Okay, I think it was turned on because some of the people were distracted by it, so.
Ask and you shall receive.
That's right, all you gotta do is ask. Anybody else?
We have Cynthia Carter?
Carter.
Carter.
Cynthia.
Hi. Mayor, City Council Commissioner, my name is Cynthia Carter, and I'm with the Allo Valley ACLU. Came to invite you guys and let you guys know about a meeting that is going on this Friday, and I'm remiss because you all were supposed to get like personal invitations, but anyway. This Friday, we have a meeting, a Stand Against Homelessness, and it's at six o'clock at the Manzanita Community House, which is on Q, was three eight six two seven, Thirty Second Street East, and it's right off of Q, and it's a public forum for the community and staff members and the city members to discuss solutions and relief for our homeless community.
Thank you for that.
We're coming together with other organizations and stuff to try to address this issue in our community. And cordially invite you all to come out and hear or speak, you know, to address our membership.
Thank you, I know, I know we have, I know we already have some staff that is assigned to that.
Yes.
So, there will be somebody there, trust me, okay?
I know.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
And you keep moving further closer to the, come on down.
Good evening, my name is Efraim Manriquez, I've been a resident of Palmdale since eighty-nine. I own a few properties here in the area, that I own a couple of tractors this year between Q seven and Palmdale Boulevard, my garage doors face that alley. I don't know if this is where I was supposed to bring this to or not, I've been very upset over the years that graffitiers, they come in and they graffiti all my, my garage doors. I always have to go out there and have it painted over and over and over. Just last month, I got notices from the city, two notices, from my garage stores were graffiti done again, and again, I-
Did you, didn't you email me those?
No.
Didn't they, no, okay, it was another guy.
No, but, but this has been happening, I, I mean, I got a few properties and it happens, and the city will go ahead and send a code violations, but I, I'm tired of, of all this here. They go ahead and graffiti, I pay for them to get replaced, I just replaced all of my garage doors, over six thousand dollars, three days later, they got graffiti on them, I mean, I'm, I'm the one who's spending money here, I, I pay my taxes, what do these guys do? And where are they going?
Alright, so, what I'd like you to do is, two things. Check and make sure, see if your, your neighborhood has a, a landscape maintenance district, because that helps address some of these issues in neighborhoods that have them, some neighborhoods voted it out, so it makes it difficult, we have to jump through some more hoops for the city to get involved, when they start talking about walls and doors and things like that. It's not as complicated when you have a landscape maintenance district, because the neighbors have decided they want it, they want the city to, to help with that aspect of it, but, what I'll do is, our police chief is back there, he's, I'm gonna call him up anyhow in a minute, and our public works director is waving at you, talk to those guys and see if we can help find some solutions, and I'm gonna ask those guys to report back to me later, okay?
Yeah, and you might wanna talk with our, our public safety people and talk about maybe some, some ideas about motion sensor lighting, some type of thing. Or, or paint, that's graffiti proof paint where when they spray it, you can wash it off, I mean, there are some solutions for you as, as a homeowner, but I, maybe you're just not aware of them, so hopefully, either the sheriff's department or our public safety department can work with you and find out maybe some solutions.
There is lighting back there, I mean, they just use it to go ahead and do their thing.
So they can see what they're painting, yeah, okay.
So, I, I don't know if, if the city has anything in regards to cameras.
See what we can do.
We just did a huge, huge camera program, where over a thousand Ring cameras went out.
Yeah.
And everybody was eligible to get a substantial discount on the cameras, but that, those went that fast.
That would have been great for my residents, but for that area, I think.
Mr. Manriquez, I'm sure Captain is going to tell you, it's important that you bring the sheriffs out there to photograph those images, because they can identify certain perpetrators, and, and then there's a restitution program when they do catch these people. The parent, if they're minors that are doing it, the parents are responsible. But I, I think it's very important for you to document each and every time that happens.
Alright.
So, if you thought, we have the assistant city manager, the sheriff's captain is our police chief, and our public works director are back there, those guys can help you.
Yeah, and perhaps because he is a repeat victim, or perhaps because of location that this is happening, we can maybe talk about those things that he keeps getting, from the city.
I mean, for, I've owned them since the early nineties.
Yeah, we, we can't specifically get involved with the citation, because that's like ticket fixing, and I, I'm not gonna have him arrest me for a felony. So, I'll let you talk to them about that, okay?
But thank you for coming on, Mr. Manriquez.
Thanks, so, thank you for that, oh, there's Mike, Mike was on one.
There he is.
Oh, there's, there he is, I was trying to get him, three other people, I didn't see Mike, anybody else? Phil, were you, did you want, have something, sir?
How did you know I had something?
So, you're sitting there, with your notepad.
Yeah, Phil Danny, wanna talk about illegal fireworks one last time. And I'd like to ask the council to remove the fireworks, the booths. They're not safe, they're not sane. Take a sparkler, put it next to your face, and tell me how safe that is. And this ordinance came about in November of nineteen sixty-two. And that insignia right above you is August nineteen sixty-two. This has been around since November of nineteen sixty-two, quite a few years. And you've made some progress here tonight. You wanna see things change and, and move, and this is not moving. So, anyway, you know what, I'm gonna go off script and just say, ladies and gentlemen of the council, you have the unique opportunity to make thousands and thousands and thousands of people very, very happy, along with their animals, along with their pets. All you have to do, and this is why I'm here in April, is all you have to do is put it on the agenda, get rid of the fireworks booths, when I brought this up last summer, I got some static. You can replay the tape for that, I know there's some different personnel here right now, and that's probably a good thing. But that's what, that's what I'm asking, put it on the agenda, do the right thing, which I think would be the right thing, putting it on the agenda, get rid of the fireworks booths, they're not safe, they're not sane. And as for an organization, getting all their money from the, you know, the sale of these things, I can't, I can't buy that. If they can't make it in, in more than, more than eleven and a half months, what are they gonna do in seven days, so I can't buy that, so. So, that's what I'm asking you to do, mayor, do the right thing, put it on the agenda, get rid of the booths, that's a start.
Thank you, sir.
Alright.
Anybody else? I think we're running out of people. That it? Alright, item number fifteen. Who wants, wants to handle AQMD? So, the biggest item that we, that we had on the AQMD agenda was, there were fiscal reports and things as well, mobile emission programs to participate when people buy electric vehicles, and we ultimately approved, I think the number was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. AQMD is gonna be working on a program to swap out the, the power, yeah, that the gasoline powered, hand operated mowers and trimmers, commercial. And it's about eighty percent that AQMD will pay you for that. I wasn't convinced, just like I wasn't originally convinced on the electric bus, I tell you what, I've got the two pieces of equipment, actually, I got three of them, because I got the blower, the trimmer, and a mower. I tell you what, they're really good, we had the guys come in and demonstrate it to us, we've been running programs, I think Public Works has been doing some tests with them, and the Jet Hocks and some of the school districts have been doing them. And the cost of operating them is a fraction of what it is to operate your, your gas powered ones. A, a gas powered mower, we had staff come up, just to kinda put it in perspective, the gas operated mowers have the equivalent exhaust output of seven vehicles operating. While, while I think, just because there's, there's no effective controls on them, so, I'm gonna ask that we take a look to, to come up, segue into that, so that our contractors start, it's a five-year program with AQMD, and I think we need to take a look at having those contractors start migrating over, over the next five years. So, that was discussed at length, so, alright, AVTA?
Yeah, I went to AVTA, I guess the principal thing is that we voted for a for fuel, for diesel fuel, between now and the time when the whole district will be converting over to electrical, I think that was the principal thing. And then, of course, we had Macy here tonight that gave a very good presentation of what's happening there. Those meetings are usually very brief, they cover things quickly, and, but I think that was the main thing that we voted on that budget item.
Alrighty, I did not have the ability to go to contract cities, audit committees?
There was no audit committee.
Yeah, it only meets twice a year, thank you for taking that one. Investment oversight committee, did you guys have anything on that? High Desert Corridor, we didn't meet this, this last month in High Desert Corridor. And Lega Cities is coming up. So, we've got the meeting, the stuff coming up at the state, coming up very quickly here, a couple of weeks, sanitation.
Well, there wasn't a meeting this last month, we had a meeting the month before that.
Oh, that's right.
We did have a tour of the sanitation facilities here in.
I've never seen that many people out at a tour like that.
That was, that was, that was very interesting.
They filled up two buses to do the field trip part of that thing, so.
It is an amazing process, I mean, you think about the fact that, you know, you use water in your sink, and you take a shower, and you use the other facilities, and you don't even think about where all this stuff goes, but it's an amazing processing plant that we have there. Water that is recycled is being retained in these mile-long basins, that is then used for irrigating alfalfa fields, large field that's consisting of at least two thousand acres, that brings in money to the sanitation district to offset it. So, they're trying not to contaminate the groundwater by having these bases that are protected with liners, and I was, I was truly impressed with, with everything that goes on there, because I hadn't really given it much thought. But it is a good deal.
Turn your faucet on, it works, your flushing, it works, and everybody's happy.
It's the most important part of our lives, is having running water and plumbing, and most people don't even think about it.
That's essentially what, what defines the difference between a third world country and advanced civilizations, is sewage, believe it or not, it's sewage.
I believe they just used to dump it out the window before.
Yes, they did.
Yep, run it down the garden. I, on the sanitation district, I attended the Personnel Committee meeting, and we we got a very, I've gotta be careful so I don't, so the attorney keep a keep a leash on me, but I can't get into the specifics of the Personnel Committee meeting, but we may need to revisit the rate structure and reserve status soon, and with, with certain members of that board representing multiple districts, we had four people at that meeting that was able to control all the votes at that meeting, and we literally fell one vote short repeatedly until they brought that proposal in, which you'll be well briefed on that in no time, but it was not, I don't think it, I don't think it was in the best interest of the taxpayers the way that went. NCTC, there's no NCTC meeting this time.
And there was.
Recycled?
Yeah, there was no recycled whiteboard meeting on this one either.
I gotta give you guys some meetings if you're not having these meetings, good God! Okay, Skag, yes, we had meetings. Did you, did you make it to the Reno meeting?
No, I missed this one, but I tried to tell you, those meetings that are broadcasted, some of us have been able to do, but not this last one.
Alright, we, the most important thing is they're having a pre, pre-meeting, pre-committee meeting, joint meetings, and we are discussing the, the RTPSCS and the some of the components of the regional transportation plan. It's very complex, so they've broken it out into a number of meetings and the components to it, and in addition, Mike's been there with me, Mike Dehan's been there, and we're, we're trying to work through some of our local items. We were, we made a point during the airport presentation to ensure that everybody was abundantly aware that we had to keep Palmdale Airport on the radar, so to speak, and that's probably the most significant thing that has been going on there, so they're beginning to move through the Reno process, we're intending to do the analysis on some of the state state requirements. state requirements for density, density around transit, density of two buses go, and things of this nature, so. That's that. Sister Cities had their meeting, they had to, any of you make it to their thing, I was out of town, uh, to the shindig that they had, it was, it was extremely well-attended, was my understanding. They had a fundraiser for their upcoming, uh, yeah, the visitation coming up. And, uh, I'm gonna ask also, one of the member's sons had passed away, and I'll bring that up at the end when we adjourn, so. It was not, not, not good at all, single-vehicle wreck. Present Committee?
Um, we did not have it. Remember, we're sponsoring it, we're gonna be the host on the twenty-fourth of April, so I'm expecting all of you guys to show up, it will be here at City Hall.
Can we, can we make sure we get a reminder set up?
Twenty-fourth, three o'clock.
On the, on the Present Committee, this is coming up, can we just make sure we get?
We are gonna be the host, so it would be nice if you guys would attend.
Yeah, can we make sure, make sure we get that out there? Okay, uh, you wanna go ahead with, uh, uh, any other stuff? You wanna start on that end?
Sure, why not? So, let's see, this month, um, I went ahead and met with the people that are going over our general plan and, and our stakeholders, what we're interested in and seeing happen with that, so I had a meeting with them. I met with a few of our constituents, so the problems that they were having, both on the east side and the west side. Had lunch with the city manager. Uh, went to the Pomona Vista Fitness Groundbreaking, so that was fun. I'm waiting to see when that's completed, so we can all get out there with our exercise suits and show the public what we're capable of doing.
Head, head out there, uh, if I'm not there, start without me.
Okay, I, I certainly will. Um, I attended the Home for Families event for the, um, housing for veterans, it was a really nice event. And, uh, a lot of really, really nice people there, doing great things for our community. I did the Barrel Springs cleanup on Saturday, went out there and picked up a whole bunch of trash. In fact, we had to stop early because we had picked up so much trash that we had filled the containers that we had. So we need to get out there and do that again real soon. And, um, I also attended the retirement dinner for, um, Assistant Sheriff Bobby Denham. And that was on Sunday, was a very, very good turnout, it was nice to see everyone there. Um, Bobby Denham was actually my, my first boss when I was a volunteer back when he was a sergeant in ninety-one.
Remember when he was just, just a deputy here, had nothing on his sleeve or his collar?
Yeah, yeah.
And, but, I think he had a mustache back then, didn't he?
Yeah, he did, and he had hair too.
He still had hair too, yeah.
But it was a nice event.
You'll be up next, don't worry.
So, um, that's, that's pretty much what I, what I did, so, there you go.
It's my turn, um. At the beginning of the month, uh, JJ and I went over to, uh, P3 Conference in Dallas. Uh, very informative, um, I had a chance to see what possibilities are out there through a public-private partnership, that's what P3 stands for. We found out that there is a lot of interest in developing airports, uh, nationwide, uh, since that's something that we're trying to do here. Um, we met with a couple of, uh, teams that put together this kind of a projects. Uh, again, very informative, not only for airports, but for transportation, a big thing right now throughout the country, and also, uh, community centers. Uh, also another way that we could, uh, potentially take advantage of doing a P3, um, negotiation to see if that's something that we can, uh, find a alternative mechanism, um, to fund some of the, uh, public, um, areas that we're trying to work on, like the parks and community centers, uh, maybe an opportunity to incorporate a community center into one of the parks, if we found the right, uh, partners to do that. A big challenge is, uh, um, revenue for these projects, they do cost some money. First thing they told us is that it's, it's not to get money, those conferences are not meant to give, uh, cities or other organizations free money. It's about investing in a project, uh, having someone manage it, having the revenue to pay back, um, the bonds, uh, through private, uh, investments. Uh, very informative, again, that's something that we can maybe start looking at. Uh, I was able to take some pictures of some of the projects that were done over there, and I believe I asked, uh, our City Attorney to forward the rest of the council, um, the, uh, the photos, and also the, uh, um, a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, I don't know if you had a chance to do that, but I sent an email requesting that everybody gets the council. Okay, so we'll get it soon. Uh, so that was through the first week of, uh, March, uh, that's the reason I missed the March Council. Uh, we were out there. And, um, I also attended the General Plan Stakeholder Interview with a consultant for the General Plan, uh, with Mr. Law, uh, great, great conversations we had with the consultant. Let's see, all the March nineteen, uh, workshop on the CCAs, uh, that we had, did that too. Um, on March twenty-second, um, we attended the AB Board of Trade Outlook Conference. Another great opportunity to see what, uh, forecasters are looking at the, uh, Antelope Valley in general, uh, very optimistic. I was surprised to see that they are forecasting, uh, housing to continue to grow, uh, again, something that we're trying to see. Um, challenging, uh, again, and the Antelope Valley trying to get, um, financing for residential, single-family, multifamily continues to be a challenge, as we've discussed. Let's see, what else did I do? Oh, I attended the Antelope Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Installation this last Friday. Uh, and also I attended a, uh, kind of a workshop, um, uh, with, um, consultant or firm that is trying to do, um, some motivational, um, things for public servants. Uh, I also went to USE, uh, for another workshop, uh, having to do with, uh, again, trying to create public service, uh, how to identify and connect, uh, with constituents, uh, throughout, uh, organization. Uh, very informative as well. Uh, actually, they were trying to do a, uh, five or six-month program through USC. I believe that you guys received that email, I, I think everybody got it. Um, unfortun- unfortunately, they, they did not receive the number of respondents that they were looking at to create this program, so they're gonna have to, um, do it again, uh, they set up potential in the summer, uh, through USC. Uh, that's something that I think will be very beneficial for everyone to attend, that's my report.
That's the, the Price School.
The Price School.
Yeah, that's Frank Zeruni's program.
Yeah, US.
It's outstanding, so. Mr. Law?
Am I next? Hi, uh, let's see, March fifth, I attended the Animal Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Uh, on March seventh, early in the morning, I went to the, um, Palmdale Booster Club Board of Directors Meeting. And after that was the Palmdale Sheriff Coffee with a Cop, so I attended that. Uh, on March seventh, there was a tour of Delta Scientific Open House, which was very interesting with what they've got going on there. Uh, that afternoon, there was the General Plan Stakeholder, uh, interview that, uh, Mr. Corio mentioned. Let's see here. On March eleventh, I attended the Animal Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting. On Thursday, March fourteenth, uh, the Mock Trial Award Ceremony at Eastside High School. Mock Trial Program at Animal Valley High Schools is, uh, yeah, very, uh, important, um, session that is being held, it's a, it's like, uh, the young people take up a criminal case, they have a prosecutor, they have a defense counsel, they have witnesses, some of them act as expert witnesses in scientific, uh, forensic-type presentations. And it is amazing how these young students, um, actually perform, uh, with a short period of time in which they prepare. And so, on March fourteenth, the, uh, uh, winners were, uh, announced for the mock trial ceremony, and, and I was given an opportunity to speak to the, to the, uh, young people and their faculty and their coaches. I also, um,
Make sure you leave us their names in case you need a business.
Yes, we do, we do need to, to do that.
Gotta do better than my last guy did.
Right, um, and, um, and I, I also acted as a scoring judge at, at, uh, at three of the four competitions that were held. There was also groundbreaking ceremony on the Fitness Court that, we'll start without you, right? Let's see, uh, I believe.
My wife is watching this.
There was the, uh, AVHCC Installation Gala, which was just on Friday night, um, that was attended by the mayor, uh, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Corio, myself, and, um, the mayor, uh, installed directors, and Mr. Bishop installed ambassadors to that organization. I know I'm leaving something out here. Oh, we went to the Highlands, um, this just, just this last Saturday, right?
Yep.
Uh, that was, this was over at the amphitheater, and, um, there was, uh, what, two, three thousand people there?
Oh, more than that.
You think?
Yeah.
And, uh, so we were given an opportunity to address, uh, the folks that were there. Uh, that, uh, church has been part of, uh, Palmdale and the Greater Antelope Valley for thirty years, and they were celebrating the thirtieth anniversary. That was very significant. There was also, um, the ribbon-cutting for, uh, the Palmdale School District, uh, Burning Center over here at, uh, Tumbleweed?
No, uh, um, do, was it Dos, Dos Caminos?
No, 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 uh,
That was Tumbleweed.
It was at Tumbleweed, correct?
Was it Tumbleweed? Yeah, Tumbleweed, yeah.
And so, one of the things that, that came out of there, uh, Mr. Partee, um, there was, in the past, um, a, a relationship between Palmdale and, and the Palmdale School, Palmdale City and Palmdale and the Palmdale School District for after-school care programs. And I asked, uh, uh, Mr. Malvinado Superintendent, uh, whether that program was ongoing, because I wasn't sure whether it was or not. He told me that there was not, there's other partnerships with the Palmdale School District. But that is something, he said that the Palmdale School District, uh, actually has one of the largest latchkey kids in, certainly in California. And that was a program that we had, and, and I'm just wondering if maybe we can take a look at that and, and, uh, see what, uh, what could be done in the future about maybe, uh, uh, renewing that program. Uh, apparently, the Westside School District does have after-school care programs and associations. Suppers, Boys and Girls.
We, we just recently got out of that, Richard. There's a reason why, so you'll need to sit with the city manager and discuss that.
Okay, well, maybe I need to be educated on the point, but it, it functioned for several years when I was on the council before.
Then it didn't.
In one fashion or another, pardon?
And then it didn't.
And then it didn't. Well, we have a latchkey program, uh, and it is in our city. And I think that we need to be responsive to that issue, if there's one way we can do it or another, I mean, we need to explore the possibilities.
When we changed this, we did not just walk away from it, we worked with local nonprofits, and they took over. Um, so the entire number of s- of children that were being handled by the city were taken over by the local nonprofits, the Y and Boys and Girls Club, at actually lower rate than what the city was charging. And so we were able to move that program on to a nonprofit and, and kind of take that out of our mission, uh, and then move staff that were working on daycare into our park programs. We're doing the same thing right now with a Tiny Tots program as well. Uh, trying to move away from those things and get more activities and programs in the parks. And at the same time, then partnering with the school district, we're working on a project together, for tutoring centers at two of our parks, uh, two of the recreation centers, where we're gonna provide the facilities and the wifi and so forth, and the school district is gonna provide tutors, uh, for after-school.
And that's also functioning in the Palmdale School District?
We're working with the Palmdale School District on it, it's not up and running yet, but that's, it's a new program that we're working on.
Can we make sure that we have that kind of service on the east side? Uh, I would support you in that, uh, Mr. Law, that's something that I've been asking to do. I know there were some issues, but I believe that we can work through those issues. Uh, and maybe you get a briefing on what the reason was that this after-schools, uh, program, uh, got, got discontinued.
I, I just wanna caution us that we're off agenda.
No, well, I, uh, maybe in the, uh, session, we have for agenda items, I can ask for it.
Go ahead and get a, get, get him, get him a briefing.
Yeah, yeah. The point is, I attended the ribbon-cutting at, uh, Tumbleweed School for the, uh, the program.
I do.
But I, I just, Mr. Malvinado brought that up, so. Anyway, I'm sure I, I said a couple of other things, um, but I can't remember what they are, and it's getting late, and I've got an early court session.
Okay, um, a lot of the stuff that you guys already went over, I, I already attended, uh, General Plan, uh, meeting, uh, groundbreaking for the fitness courts. Uh, I was also at the Hispanic Chamber, uh, Installation Gala, uh, we're getting to install the ambassadors. One meeting I had in particular that, that stood out that I wanted to bring up was I had a meeting with, uh, Jim Partee, where we reached out to the animal consultant, and he, uh, I think the meeting went very well. I think we're going to seek services with him and, and get some guidance on, on how, uh, how we're gonna move forward with the animal service contract, and he's gonna give us some, some guidance on, uh, moving forward, whether we switch to no-kill or we take over a part of the, a part of the contract that, that just allows us to deal with the homing of the animals and, uh, more of just the, uh, the sheltering part of it, where it leaves the county with the rest of it. So we're gonna open up that, that door, and we're gonna explore what that means with this consultant. Um, that was one, uh, meeting I had with, uh, our city manager this, this month, that I think that, uh, that's gonna make some good differences in the future. Uh, that's pretty much it for me.
Um, uh, I was at all that, and then, uh, we did the TDA Article Eight hearings for unmet transit needs. I had meetings in Lancaster, Palmdale, and Santa Clarita. I had several meetings here for, uh, Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, for merit badges and, uh, different things. Uh, Arrow of Light ceremonies out in the field, things like that. Uh, I was with Mr. Corio on a, uh, some citizenship program that, a couple of Saturdays ago, and that was, that was very good that we were able to do that. Uh, I was asked to go to a, uh, speak at Toastmasters, Liability Oversight Board, um, same stuff, different day, uh, more money. The, uh, had a meeting with some residents that are very interested in helping participate in the, uh, um, in a historical component to our, uh, uh, art and, um, museum facility, uh, as soon as we can get that open. Uh, let's see, AQMD was on at Tumbleweed with you, um, and, uh, most significantly, he, uh, oh, was out of Baker to Vegas, uh, finally got to bed about four-thirty in the morning, uh, up there at the top of, uh, Mountain Springs. It's something else watching those, watching that, that whole thing come together and all those guys running. And, uh, how did Palmdale, where they, where, where are, no, county, combined county came in third? County, yeah, and Belize National Police came in first. Todd, you know, I guess they can train. Uh, I've gotta hand it to the, um, to the Playhouse staff. I was there last weekend at the Little Mermaid, we're talking, every single seat is filled. Staff is in there having to have people move over so we can get people to sit together, uh, to watch those kids' faces when the, when, I don't know what they are, the bubbled people come down the aisles. I don't know this stuff, I just was there watching my grandkid get killed. Jellyfish, I don't know what they are, so. But just, uh, just watching that whole process, watching the kids light up, uh, just the, the joy on their faces, and, and the absolute professional manner that that thing is put together, uh, uh, the, the set, the sets, the sound people, the lighting, it, it's just amazing, if you haven't been to one recently, you're the loser, so you missed. Um, and, uh, whole bunch of sanitation district, uh, School Boards Association, I went out to them. Uh, testified a couple times this month on at the Board of Supervisors, so I missed the Home for Families because I was down there, uh, supporting Supervisor Barker's effort to, to, um, get some better clarity on the EIFDs, because right now it's financially impossible for seventy-one out of eighty-some cities to be able to participate. So, the, the board heard testimony from a number of us, and I think they were, uh, convinced that they need to make some, um, adjustments in that. I'd like to ask this evening that we adjourn our meeting in memory of our sister cities', uh, uh, members son, Anthony Tomeche. Uh, also, uh, I attended services, this was a rough weekend, folks. Had three services to go to, Anthony Tomeche, uh, Pat Murray, US Marine Corps, hundred-and-one years old. And, uh, a, a very prominent, um, member, uh, if you ever attended the African-American, uh, Chamber of Commerce, that lady that was sitting there going. uh, Chamber of Commerce, that lady that was sitting there going, wrap it up, wrap it up, very, always very properly dressed, uh, Evria Gillespie Evans, uh, her service as well. Um, all, all of these were wonderful people that are lost to the community, but, but the community is better because of them. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in that, but before we do that, I want the, I want the new guy come up and introduce himself. Because I participated in the, uh, the, the very first interview system with the captains and
Kind of improved them, right?
We got
I grew six inches.
And, and we, and we, and we, we got run anyhow, so.
Sir? I'm Ron Schaefer. I've been with the LA County Sheriff's Department for twenty-eight years. I've had the pleasure of working, um, I'll say all over the county, north, south, east and west. Uh, and it's been a pleasure and a delight. I came to Palmdale in two thousand fifteen as a watch commander and, um, I did that for a while, became operations lieutenant, then I became operations lieutenant, acting captain, then captain and operations lieutenant, and now hopefully just captain. But it's a, it's a, it is truly a treasure and a delight to be here at Palmdale. And it's for multiple reasons. The, again, I've worked multiple places and I've, I've seen the interaction between the city and the station and Palmdale is second to that. The personnel you have working at Palmdale Station, many of them live here and they have a commitment to the community. It's more than just doing the job, it's, they're engaged in the community, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. Uh, the city staff, city manager, uh, the directors, the staff are just absolutely remarkable. The support that we get from them really helps.
Ron, you got your job, it's okay.
I really, I really. And, uh, the, but I'll reach into the community too. The support from the community is phenomenal. They, they truly do, uh, appreciate the public service from the deputies. Uh, and from that, from day one coming out here, I saw it within the first ten minutes of being here. Uh, coming out here as a watch commander was the first time I'd worked in the Antelope Valley. I lived out in this way for fifteen years more and, uh, uh, I'm, I'm humbled by the relationships we have with the city and we'd actually like to tighten that bond. You know, you referenced me as the police chief and with sheriff's department, we normally don't have that, but having that relationship with the city is very important to me and we wanna build that bridge and work more closely with you. There's a lot of things the city's doing to be the tip of the spear for public safety and it's, it is truly a delight to be out here.
Ron, I just, I wanna tell you, 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 uh, you killed the interview process. You did, you did great. We expect great things from you and you're, we're already seeing it because I know that we had a, uh, community relations issue that, uh, could have had a potential of, uh, going sideways and, uh, you immediately said, let's talk about it and, and, uh, I know the follow-up is ongoing. So, uh, uh, we're, we're, you got some, uh, big shoes to fill, uh, after Dennis left. And, uh, but we're, we're happy to have you and, uh, you know, let us know what you need.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do appreciate the vote of confidence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scotty. Mr. Man, before you go to the next slide, and there is an event that I forgot to mention that I think is worth mentioning. Uh, the census, um, Salva had a little press release, uh, announcing that from yesterday, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days, the census will, uh, commence. And the, uh, press release basically was to make everybody aware of the importance of having, uh, you counted, uh, to make sure that, uh, everybody gets counted because what it relates to is to, uh, funding for different several programs, social programs, uh, there's, maybe, um, housing, uh, policing, roads, traffic, all kinds of, uh, money could come, uh, if we can show that we have, uh, population that has grown. Um, again, the main focus was in making people aware that a year from yesterday, uh, the census will take place. There's gonna be a workshop on April twenty-third, I believe, on Wednesday, at the, uh, senior center, I believe. Um, that's something that I just forgot to mention that I think is, uh, worth mentioning.
Yeah, it, it is extremely important because, you know, our political representation is based on our population, the federal money and grants and things that we get for, for, um, you know, our underprivileged people, our homeless is all based on the census count. And what I want to remind the public of is that the census by federal law is unable to share individual information with any other government agency. While they can share aggregate data, they cannot give away information on who's legal, who's illegal, who's homeless, who's not homeless. All of that stuff is confidential and cannot be shared with any other, um, government agency. So for people that fear putting their information out there, it, it's confidential information. And I think the census doesn't even become public, 'cause I'm a genealogist, um, for seventy years. So we're just, we're, I'm still waiting as a genealogist for the nineteen fifty census to come out so I can update my genealogy records. So for people that fear the census, please don't fear it. Please fill out your information and know that it's gonna be kept confidential.
Mr. Partee, can you give us a, uh, brief, uh, briefing on the, uh, DC?
So the Assistant City Manager and I, and with two of our representatives from the Ferguson Group, our lobbying group, uh, went to Washington DC last week to have meetings with our various representatives. Uh, so we held meetings with Senator Feinstein's office, uh, Senator Harris's office, Representative Brownlee's office, Representative Hill's office, and then various committees and regulatory agencies, the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, uh, the Director of the Governor, California Governor's Washington Office, who also turned out to be the, the Secretary, the custodian, the doorkeeper, a little bit of everything. There's a one-person presence for California and Washington right now. Uh, the Senate Committee on Tr- on Commerce, Science and Transportation, their Subcommittee on Space and Aviation, uh, the US Department of Transportation, Office of Infrastructure, Finance and Innovation. I'd talk about some of the grants that are coming out, uh, the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure and their Subcommittee on Aviation. And so a really well-rounded, uh, program that we went with our lobbyists to talk about, uh, the city's needs, showcase some of the things that we're doing. Uh, Representative Brownlee was instrumental in getting us funding for our Course in Arts Colony and so wanted to make sure that we touch bases with, with her on that project and the other veterans programs that we're doing, the Habitat for Heroes and so forth. And so, uh, we keep those relationships going and, um, work with these different agencies on, um, both regulatory side and also the funding side to make sure that we keep, uh, a federal presence and we support our aerospace and then all our, our transportation, uh, all the various networks that we're doing. Uh, obviously with some of those committees, we plugged, uh, the airport, made sure we're doing the right things to get the support letters we need when we sit down with FAA and, and move those, move the airport forward. So it was a, a really excellent trip, um, quite a lot packed into a few days.
Excellent. Okay, um, so I'll give the, uh, uh, city clerk the, uh, notes here, but I also had a request that we add. Mr. Ro- Roberto Ceron, C E R O N. He was over at AV Imports, um, sudden illness and he passed away quite unexpectedly and he was not a very old man, was very shocked to everybody that knew him. So, uh, little, um, little, uh, shop over here on the boulevard.
Right around the corner.
Right around the corner here, so, uh, let's keep him and the family along with, uh, the other members and I'll give that to city clerk. All right, with that, meeting adjourned.
Don't be worried.
Oh, oh, meeting not adjourned.
Not, not quite yet. So as far as additional requests for new agenda, it's not like I wanna add to my workload, but, uh, I did have a request from, uh, Councilmember Corio in regard to support for, uh, HR6, uh, which is supporting DACA and temporary protected status. Uh, the council did adopt resolutions last year for a different set of House resolutions. Uh, and so I wanted to get the council's concurrence to bring, uh, new resolutions back, uh, for our next meeting, uh, in support of, uh, both DACA and TPS.
I think we were okay with it last time. We, we just, we wanted, again, we, we toned down some of the, uh, the, um, the
The language on
The controversial stuff, yeah.
A little bit of the rhetoric that was in there. I understand, I get it, but I think that the point that we need to be making is we have residents, we need to take care of our residents. We have, uh, resident, people that are residents here that are great grandparents that were invited into our country, uh, under one of those programs and now all of a sudden as well, you got all these kids, all these grandkids and everything else, now you leave, that's not right. So, uh, I think massage it, I think we're good on it though. And I apologize, I, I thought we were moved forward.
Miscommunication, I, I failed to follow up on that.
Okay.
It was on agenda. So item sixteen, I have another item that I have to request. Um, so the saying goes, when you see an opportunity, go for it. And I heard Mr. Loa, uh, saying that he wants to reinstate some of the, uh, or look at reinstate some of the after-school programs. I've been talking about doing an MOU with the school district for two and a half years now. Now that I hear Mr. Loa's comments, I think that, um, that's something that I can get support on. Maybe, uh, after they brief you on why the, uh, after-school programs got cut, uh, with the Westside School District, um, they'll let you know why, but I believe that there are, uh, opportunities to bring back that program. You mentioned that there is a new program coming up where there's gonna be some park facilities that are going to be able to do some after-school programs. That is great, but I don't see where that would happen on the east side. I see that, well, maybe at the, uh,
At Oasis.
Oasis. Yeah, the Oasis would be, uh, correct. Um, but maybe that's something that we need to, um, start looking at again, not only as far as CC and the facilities.
We have something going over with the community houses, don't we?
Well, and we have to be sure that this, um, MOU goes both ways because we've asked the Palmdale School District for use of their fields, um, I think year after year after year, and yet that's never happened. Um, they have a lot of grassy areas, people can
I think we, in general, I think we're improving the relationship with those guys.
And so
Well, speaking of, I mean, if we develop an MOU, it's gotta go both ways. We can't be the only ones giving into this. They have to be able to participate and open up their doors.
So let me rephrase it. Work on an MOU that is worth going both ways, mutually beneficial. Do not work on an MOU that would only benefit upon the school district.
You know, the, the, the overarching important issue here is that there are thousands of latchkey kids in the school district and in the city.
Yeah.
And even though that may not be exactly under our bailiwick, nevertheless, it is an issue that is important and problematic in the community and we ought to do something about it. So that's what, that's what I'm asking you to do.
And you know what I benefited from that program? My daughter went to Desert Rose and she was able to participate in the after-school program. I would pay twenty-five dollars a week so that she could stay at school when I got off work at five-thirty at the time.
Lot more of a
And I would just pick her up. So those are the benefits that I see in doing an both-way MOU that would benefit the city in the use of their facilities. They do have facilities that we could be able to use. In fact, when we were doing the Avenue Q feasibility study, they let us use one of their school, um, the one on, uh, Q four by the McDonald's. We used that as a community meeting to, uh, do outreach as part of what was required for the Avenue Q feasibility study. So it is, it's supposed to be a mutual MOU where both parties benefit and I've stated in the past that it's not only with the Palmdale School District. I've stated in the past that we, if other school districts want to participate, that's great. But look at it again at what we have on the east side. We need to get those kids being able to go to places where they can do their after-work, after-school, uh, they get help with their homework and I benefited from that as a parent.
So you know, my grand, when we just continue this program, my granddaughter is no, no longer able to go at one of the Westside schools, so.
So there you go. So I'm just asking that we start looking at again at a mutual benefited MOU. Now that I see
Let's, let's continue the dialogue with them and see where they have needs, we have needs, let's see where we can work that out. What's the shirt color for the next meeting, by the way?
Yeah, I didn't get the memo, thanks, guys.
Blue. Blue, okay, blue. Got that memo? All right, all right. All right, now, will you adjourn?
Okay, you need to ask.
Ten twenty-five, Mayor.
I said ten fifteen, so it's not bad.